Okay, welcome to this evening's work session. First line of business would be if any commissioner would like to discuss any of the preliminary items for the next BLC meeting.
Maybe it's just me, but I didn't see the preliminary item.
Yeah, she gave us an email in print. Okay, all right, are there any items on the next preliminary agenda items that a commissioner would like to see, not on the consent agenda, but on the regular agenda? Okay, if not, then we will start the work session discussion items. First is Upper Riverdale Road Corridor Market Analysis, which will be led by Chief Merkison and I guess his staffer team. Chief?
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Tonight, Chief Merkison, under his lens of the chief resiliency officer, will provide you a market analysis and overview of what's happening up on the Upper Riverdale Road Corridor. We've been in several discussions with the Development Authority, the Office of Economic Development, and other key stakeholders in the community to assist us with trying to figure out ways that we can continue to build out that corridor. So to that end, I'll yield the floor to Chief Merkison, and he'll introduce our guests for tonight, and I will yield for any questions post the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. COO, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As the COO stated, we have been engaged in several activities that have been going on out of the Office of Resilience with the Upper Riverdale Road Corridor, primarily focusing on the area around Southern Regional, but the corridor as a whole that runs between the current medical overlay district that the county has in place and the medical overlay district that the city of Riverdale has in place. So what we've looked at is that corridor that lies in between there and some of the challenges that face that corridor. About a year ago, the board approved the Office of Resilience and the Emergency Management Office to begin federal grant application through FEMA through its Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program, or BRIC for short. That is a nationwide competitive grant that actually we will file that application tomorrow, and we will start that competitive process. A key component of that is as you're applying through these grant programs, you have to show FEMA that you have a plan to rehabilitate the area so you don't get yourself back into the same predicament you've been in for the last 10 to 15 years. So as a part of that grant application, we decided to go ahead and move forward with this corridor market analysis study so we can provide FEMA some feedback as to what our potential plans are, or where we've identified some of the potential pitfalls with that area and that corridor, and how we can begin its redevelopment, hopefully driven by an influx of federal dollars from FEMA. So since the county had acquired the services of Wood Environmental to help us with the FEMA BRIC application, we expanded their scope to have Wood come in their environmental and planning side and do the corridor market analysis. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. David Versell with Wood and let him walk us through the corridor market analysis. David?
Thank you, Chief, Mr. Chairman, members of the county board. Again, my name is David Versell. I'm a planner and market analyst with Wood, and I'm going to present the findings of our market analysis study this evening. Does this advance the slides? Okay. So the market study, because it's looking at different use types, we're looking at retail, residential, office, industrial, healthcare, of course, being the top use. So we have to take a look at some different market areas within that. So you can see the different outlines on here. The smaller dotted area is what we defined as the local commercial market area. It's essentially the Upper Riverdale Corridor itself, and then the residential neighborhoods on either side of it, going a bit north and south. The regional medical market, we looked at as a five-mile radius around Southern Regional Medical Center. It's a much larger service area that you'll be providing for healthcare, so you had to zoom out a little bit. And then Clayton County as a whole, being a market area in and of itself. So the stats we looked at, take a look at those three different jurisdictions, or rather geographic areas. So the local market has been growing very slowly over time. There's been very little new housing construction for many decades, not just the last 10 years, but going back really 30 years or more, there's been almost no new housing construction within that commercial study area. You know the saying, "Retail follows rooftops," and where you see new retail development is typically where you're seeing residential growth. And because there hasn't been residential growth locally, there really hasn't been much demand for new retail or commercial space in that area. The rate of growth at the larger level, the medical study area has been a little bit higher, but not much. And then at the county level, there's been a more significant amount of growth, but mostly in areas either further south in the county or up in the northwest corner of the county around College Park. Because you've had that slow growth, there just hasn't been that demand for retail. And this is an older area, which is characterized by having lower incomes than the county in the whole, and a higher percentage of households that rent versus own. The local economy, if you look at the job base of Northern Clayton County, obviously is dominated by the airport, which means a lot of hospitality, a lot of logistics. Those are the things driving the economy locally, and medical is not really a dominant part of the economy. We'll get back to that. And then there's a significant oversupply of retail in the area. If you look at supply and demand based on households and how much retail space there is, you have more space there than you can fill, which is why there's a higher retail vacancy rate. Oh, either goes or it doesn't. Thanks. So the residential market has been very strong of late. If you look at going back 10 years, the median home sale price in 2011 in the local market area was just $23,000. It was $33,000 in the county. This is when we were coming out of the recession. There's been very strong growth, both in the county and locally, much stronger than the regional growth rate, which itself has been quite dramatic. And you've seen the median price come up year after year after year. But if you look at 2020 to 2021, it was a particularly strong rate of increase. The median sale price increased $40,000 in the local area in just one year. So a lot of new interest in the market area. Prices are coming up, but it's still affordable relative to the region. The rental market in Northern Clayton County, you essentially have no functional vacancy right now. The overall vacancy rate in the entire market, according to CoStar, is about 3%. So really, you just have almost no vacant residential rental units in the area, and there's been no new developments in this area recently, which is putting more and more pressure on the market and driving rents up. But you're seeing a significant amount of demand from new multifamily, and the income levels are there. This area is very much in commuting distance to the airport, to downtown Atlanta, to other employment centers, and you could definitely support new construction of rental housing here. The commercial real estate market, back to the point of the airport, industrials driving everything, you're seeing it all over, not just the county, but the south side, the 75 and 85 corridors, and more recently, the U.S. 1941 Corridor with some new warehouse developments going on down in the Hampton area in Henry County. These are large warehouses, you know, half million, million-square-foot, you know, regional distribution centers, and you just don't have sites for businesses like that in the Upper Riverdale Corridor. Not much land available for development, not the large sites you need, and the existing buildings don't have the characteristics that logistics businesses are looking for, the high ceilings and the accessible loading docks, et cetera. What you do have in the area, though, is some older buildings that can be retrofitted and some interesting businesses that have already come in. I don't know if any of you have been in this particular business pictured here, Reynolds Advanced Materials. They mostly service the film industry. If you want to buy props for a movie, you can go in there and buy just about anything and the materials to make things with. And they located here because they found, you know, this commercial space near the hospital that was available and suited their needs and had the loading dock they needed. So you do see some interesting businesses that you might not think of that are sprouting up in the area. Retail and office rents are coming up in Northern Clayton County, still more affordable than the rest of the region, but there will be opportunities for, you know, smaller infill opportunities such as this one. Residential market, what there will be demand for is for-sale housing for the regional workforce priced mainly in the $200,000 to $300,000 range. At that level, you're probably going to struggle to see new construction, just with the cost of buying land and building. It's hard to build a house for that much. But a lot of demand for buying older homes and renovating them. As I said, rentals, there's no vacancy. There's a lot of pressure on the market, and the renters who can come into this area, you're looking at people who can afford, households, rather, that can afford rents of $900 a month or higher for a one-bedroom unit and $1,500 or more for a two-bedroom unit. So the market will support new construction of apartments if the county would like to see that. Whoops. However, there aren't many sites for it, and there's going to need to be a focus on redevelopment, particularly of older commercial areas and in the residential neighborhoods of individual homes and lots. In order to attract more residents to the area, though, you're facing sort of a chicken egg problem, where residents want amenities. They want restaurants. They want retail. They want all the things that make people want to live places, but retailers aren't coming until there are residents. I'll get back to that in a second. And with the older units, as prices have come up, it's getting harder and harder for first-time buyers to afford the price of buying and renovating those units. So there may be some need for assisting first-time buyers who are looking to buy in this area. On the commercial side, back to that chicken egg point, you need more residents to get retail, but you need more retail to get residents. Looking at it that way, what makes sense is mixed-use developments that include both. As Chief Merkison already mentioned, you have the Terra Boulevard Medical Overlay District, which already has a plan in place for it that foresaw a great deal of new mixed-use, you know, multifamily townhouse, higher-density residential, mixed with medical office and retail. Those sorts of projects are market-supportable and could make sense. However, you're going to need to redevelop existing commercial sites to make them possible. I'll circle back to that at the end. On the medical office side, you know, this is a picture here of an existing medical office complex just across the street from the hospital. There's a lot of this, older medical space that's vacant or severely underutilized, and medical practices just aren't going to be looking for this type of space anymore. It's functionally obsolete. It could be used for something else, but more likely, buildings such as this are going to be candidates to be torn down and redeveloped. There's very little support for other types of commercial space, you know, not much demand for professional office or for neighborhood-scale retail. There are some opportunities for institutional users. One of the properties we call attention to in the report is the old Riverdale Elementary School, and, you know, that's a great opportunity for possibly another school, although I know there was briefly a charter school in there that didn't survive. Perhaps there's another similar tenant or another institutional user looking for space. But that whole site is very much in need of attention and can be a very strong community amenity if it's brought back to life with the correct use. Whoops. So wrapping this up, some key recommendations are, there are sites needed for residential development. Those opportunities will probably mean focusing on specific commercial sites for redevelopment. There's support needed to support for first-time homebuyers who want to live in this area, but because prices have come up, they can't necessarily afford to buy and renovate the homes that they'd like to live in. There's a strong need to prioritize mixed-use developments because of that chicken-egg problem I talked about. There's a need to focus on the redevelopment of older medical buildings around the hospital, particularly in light of the planned BRT line that's going to be built down Upper Riverdale Road, and will have a station right at the hospital, which really underscores the need to focus on the properties around the hospital and look at redeveloping that area. And some of the sites, this is where, you know, the rubber meets the road here. These are four sites we identified as needing the top priority. Terra Crossings is already in the medical overlay district. The county already has a plan in place to redevelop it, but this is what it looks like today. So the county really needs, in our opinion, to take a serious look at this property and figure out how to not make it be an underutilized vacant site for too much longer. The block in the city of Riverdale at Highway 85, Springdale Drive, Valley Hill Road, is a priority as well. We know that the Riverdale Renaissance Group has been taking a very close look at that block, and it certainly makes a lot of sense to look at that as a priority site. Some of the sites around Southern Regional Medical Center, particularly the medical office building, as well as some of the older homes at front on Upper Riverdale Road, will be right at that BRT station when it opens, and there's a real need to focus on maximizing the value of that transit. And then, as I mentioned, Riverdale Elementary. So in closing, I'll turn it back to Chief Merkison, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. So as we've gone through this process and as we continue to look to FEMA for funding and other areas for funding, one of the things that we're starting to see is a change in the trend of how municipalities and cities view these types of issues and view these types of developments. And there's really been a major shift in the last 10 years toward the resiliency lens and looking at making communities a lot more resilient. That led the Rockefeller Foundation to come out with the 100 Resilient Cities, which they provide funding for, not only to pay for a chief resilience officer, but to start providing grant funds and stuff, to start looking at how infrastructure is developed in cities. How do we start looking at these types of developments to ensure that our local counties, cities, municipalities can continue to provide service in the face of disruptions, whatever they may be? So when we look at it from resilience and how we approach this, not only this product, but the FEMA grant that's looking at addressing some of these issues, is we kind of looked at it from a shock and a stressor-type environment, where we look at the shocks being severe weather events, fires, floods, et cetera, but also the stresses that weaken the fabric of a city on a day-to-day or a cyclical basis. Examples of those stresses may be high unemployment rates, overtaxed or inefficient healthcare systems, which we see widespread in our community right now with access to healthcare and just the availability of that primary healthcare, endemic violence or chronic flood and/or water shortages. So as we start putting these plans together and looking at how do we address some of these areas within the county and how do we build them for success for the future, we figure that by addressing both the shocks and the stresses, the county becomes more able to respond to adverse events and improves its ability to deliver basic functions to all of our populations in both good times and bad. And these are just a few of the offices that have been extremely successful. The Norfolk, Virginia Office of Resilience, Norfolk, Virginia is an old city. It's waterfront city. It's been through hurricanes, floods, you name it. Norfolk has been through it, but the city of Norfolk has taken a stance, and they've really began to start purchasing blocks of the city at a time and redeveloping them and getting them ready to face the future. So when those future hurricanes and storms and other things that have hit Norfolk over the years don't affect their ability to provide service to their municipalities. Miami-Dade, the Resilient 305 is their watermark program, no pun intended. They focus on inland and coastal waterways and flooding and things that affect Miami and beachfront communities, so on and so forth. I know they're taking a hard look now at some of their other strategies in the light of the recent condominium building collapse and some other things that's going on down in South Florida. Atlanta Mayor's Office of Resilience has done some tremendous work as well with kind of how they're revitalizing some of the areas of Atlanta. So that's the approach we've taken to not only the BRIC funding application and how we're presenting the work that we want to do with FEMA, and that work extends from the headwaters of the Flint just south of Hartsfield, all the way down past Flint River Road, I believe, is kind of our project scope, all functioned around the Flint, but with that primary driver being the Southern Regional Corridor and that space in between those two existing medical overlay districts. So with that, that concludes this portion, and we will yield the floor to any questions.
All right. Are there any questions for the chief or Mr. Versell?
Versell.
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 Versell, okay. And again, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions?
I have, but I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. Well, you were talking about the Riverdale Elementary School. I know that that's going to be one of the sites for pre-K, for, I think it's going to be pre-K and kindergarten within that building. So they plan on, from what I know and what I've discussed with the Board of Education, that's going to be a site that will be going, like, built up more or less, and they're going to have, that's going to be one of the five or six pre-K sites that Dr. Beasley is trying to put to revitalize that building.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Chief, is this grant different from the other grant, or is this the same grant regarding the water problems and all with some of the other areas?
So there's two separate projects that we're currently working through. A lot of the work that we're doing over off of Judy Lane and in that area is a result of the HUD funding that's been recaptured, and we're reallocating those funds to addressing some of those issues. The BRIC funding application is the one we started a year ago back with the citizens off of Envoy, when we started talking about the major work that needs to be done within the Flint watershed, which does include parts of Envoy, does extend a little bit over into Judy Lane, but you start getting into the Camp Creek watershed over there. So that's why we've kind of split these two major projects. So the BRIC funding is the big one. It's the national competitive grant. We missed last year's submission deadline by about a day and a half. So tomorrow is the next round of funding, so that's what we're prepared to submit for. So it's two separate projects that are working jointly.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does, and I think you mentioned something similar to that sometime back, that that was a possibility. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes. On mentioning the warehousing, I heard you mention the high roofs in the warehousing. I know our warehouses predominantly in this area are of the older model, which means they're roughly, I believe, about 33 feet high. And I know with high tech coming into a lot of these warehouses, the change in the model, they're talking about 36-foot roofs. Now, are we talking about retrofitting, or are we speaking of another type of program?
So that's an excellent question. In this particular area along Upper Riverdale, you're not even seeing anywhere near 33-foot. You're seeing really old industrial spaces, maybe 18 to 24 feet, and it just doesn't work for modern logistics. You'll see some, you know, mom-and-pop, you know, small manufacturing or distribution companies. There's a lot of interest from, you know, small privately-owned trucking companies that are, you know, looking for space to store their trucks and store their equipment. But in terms of modern logistics space, you are looking at at least, you know, 36, if not 40-foot clearances on modern buildings.
Okay.
So there really won't be opportunities to retrofit in this corridor. Elsewhere in the county, there might be.
Okay. And my other second question is, you were talking a lot about the building of new residential for rentals. And I guess my comment and/or question is, right now, we are at 51% non-occupied homeownership here, or not, yes. And I would suggest that we do not want to move that any higher. We'd want to figure, determine, and figure out a way to where we can make these renters homeowners.
It's a good comment, and, you know, that's the policy decision all of you have before you, but the market clearly needs more rentals, whether they're here, elsewhere in the county or in other jurisdictions. There's a lot of pent-up demand for rentals, which is why you're seeing so much apartment construction all over the region.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
And I just want to make the comment, what you said about rentals. What I'm seeing is that basically millennials, they don't want to have houses, they don't want to have to deal with, dealing with cutting grass and things of that nature. So a lot of them are choosing to live in apartments, more or less. Is that one of the reasons, too, that you're seeing?
That's part of it. Part of it is just the cost of it and the down payment.
Exactly.
On the other hand, millennials, I saw a stat today, 60% of homes sold during the pandemic have been bought by millennials nationally. What they don't want is big houses on big lots, so maybe they want a different type of homeownership model.
Okay.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes, first of all, I want to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you for bringing the information before the entire board so that we can all be informed as we move forward. Secondly, I just want to piggyback on two comments that I heard in particular. One is Commissioner Anderson, and a comment on what's happening with the school system. It brings back what I always say, this is great, but we've got to do this planning in concert with our other agencies. And you're doing an amazing job, chief, but just the mere fact that we did this and we didn't have that information from our school system, I think it gives us an opportunity to make sure that we're working a little bit more in concert, particularly as we look at the usage of funds, as we're talking about now, and application of funds, and especially dealing with ARPA funding and so forth. So I would like for us to do a follow-up with the school system, and I know you've already reached out to Riverdale to see if maybe there's another piece of land that they're talking about utilizing, because Dr. Beasley did come and tell us that he's looking at, they're looking at building on several new starter preschools. So maybe that's another area. And see, that's a win-win for us, because when we're talking about developing out a business corridor, that business may want to relocate here because you mentioned transit, the availability of transit, and because they're going to have access to childcare. So we got a young workforce, so I think there's a great opportunity for us there. The other thing is just to piggyback on Commissioner Hamburg, she was asking, Commissioner Hamburg was asking about funding. I believe there's another opportunity for us to really put together an extended roundtable of folks to come through and just brainstorm, because with, as we know, the additional funding that will be released and has been released through the federal government, maybe there's an opportunity for us, chief, to be able to go in and look at developing out that land, whether we use that funding in another place through our general fund that will release additional funding so we can do it. I think that that will give us that opportunity. But the biggest takeaway is, let's not let this just be another plan, and let's move forward with it. And I believe with our commissioner in that area, I don't think she's going to let y'all just keep talking about it anyway, so, thank you. Last thing I want to say about 305, you know I try not to. So one of the things to keep in mind with economic development and the revitalization of the Miami-Dade area is they actually not only deal with resiliency, but they're experts in connecting their economic development to their cultural diversity and their cultural arts. I think that there's a space for us there because of the location as well. We're looking at medical, but also, you remember, people are traveling. Look at the Cobb Energy Center and where it's strategically located. So I'm looking forward to us continuing this conversation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Now, go back and piggyback on one thing you talked about, about bringing all of our thought partners to the table. Our process in going about this, obviously, the Board of Education will be a big part of these conversations moving forward. One of the things we kind of had to do was kind of structure an idea about how we wanted to drive conversation moving forward, and we wanted to do that having an understanding of what the market would bear, what is the demand specifically as it relates to the continued success of Southern Regional Medical Center, taking into account what PRIME's, you know, thoughts and directives are around that medical facility. So this was really meant to give us a base framework for how do we now start to bring those thought partners to the table, Atlanta Regional Commission that we're working with, the Eritropolis, the Board of Education, and really start to look at building that out, especially as we look for other pathway programs that we can bring into the school system that could potentially be medically related. We already have the EMS pathway. You know, we're looking at avenues to take that EMS pathway and connect it with Clayton State and the School of Nursing. So then can we now connect that back to Southern Regional, you know, in some way, shape, form, or fashion from a residence-type program, which I know the Southern Regional is already looking at? So this provides us that base of framework that we need to start driving those conversations, so we'll continue to bring those thought partners together. This was kind of step one, to give you an idea of what that market is looking like and kind of what our opportunities are. So as we go forward to start having those conversations, we kind of now know which lane we need to be in when we're going down that road, so.
Awesome. One more question. How do you see success? How does success look for you with this project now that we've had this presentation? What's the next step, and what is success for you?
Well, I think success for me is obviously continued success for Southern Regional in that corridor. You know, it's no secret, this community can't survive without Southern Regional, but Southern Regional can't survive without this community either. So when you start looking at just the impact on my service alone, which thankfully enough is the next presentation, you'll start to see the impact that that facility has. So success for me is a thriving community and a thriving medical center, that we're not worried about whether or not we can pay nurses. We're not worried about, you know, the volume, because we have medical infrastructure that can sustain the volume. Call volume is not getting less. It's going up 7% every year. So we're going to continue to see demands placed on not only our healthcare system locally, we're going to continue to see those stressors. It goes back to the shocks and stressors we talked about from that lens of resilience. How do we start to close those gaps? This board has done a lot, when you look at our nurse practitioner program, things we're doing in the community from a healthcare standpoint, but we're not equipped to provide healthcare for 300,000 citizens. We can be, but I would rather see a thriving medical facility, a thriving corridor that brings in that medtech business, that brings in the educational component. So you have, what David is talking about is that chicken and the egg, right? We want to bring in higher-end restaurants, we want to bring in quality dining and entertainment, we don't have the residential to support it. So, and when you look at a housing... So, and when you look at a housing stock that's, you know, late sixties, early seventies, the same millennials that you were talking about don't want to come in and drop a hundred grand to remodel a house they paid eighty-four. So, you know, so what do we start doing when we're looking at these projects and these resilience-type strategies? How do we flip that housing stock so it starts to drive that, that development? So to me, success is to see that entryway into Clayton County. You know, when you look at the plans that's laid out for that medical corridor, what a way to enter Clayton County. You know, it's, it's not the vision that's there now. So success for me is to see that.
That's perfect. So what is our next step as a board in your eyes?
Well, I think, I think tonight is, is that next step, which is we've started the conversation, right? So much as we've, we've laid a framework for what needs to drive it, so, so now you have some ideas of what the market will bear. Like you said, we already have an existing plan to the east of Southern Regional, which is the county's medical overlay. We have an existing plan to the west. So I, I guess the rhetorical question is what is the board's vision for everything in between? And, and once we understand from an operational lens what that vision is, then we'll go make it happen. That's what you pay us to do. So, you know, we, we have the framework now to do it. It tells us what it will support. So as it becomes incumbent upon us to build that coalition to make it happen.
All right. Well, thank you again, Chief and Mr. Versal. And it's a good segue. Keep it rolling. Go to the next.
We're on it.
One other thing, really quick, I know the timeline for the, uh, application process, you said the deadline is tomorrow. So do you have any idea how long that process takes?
So our application deadline tomorrow is to GMA.
Okay.
Right? So we cannot apply directly to FEMA. Our application has to be supported by GMA and submitted by them. So we are submitting to them tomorrow. GMA is going to go through their review, um, make sure they're happy with all the application. I think it has to be into FEMA by mid-January. And then once it hits FEMA's desk, we are at the mercy of the federal government. So, um, it will be a, like I said, it's a nationally competitive process. GMA has told us that they won't forward applications they don't think can compete nationally. So they think we have a very good shot at securing funding. Right now, the estimated workload is twenty-three million dollars, um, worth of work that we would like to see done in that corridor. So we'll have to see how that shakes out. But, um, right now, it should be to FEMA by mid-January and then we'll have to, we'll have to play that by year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, you have something?
Oh, yes. I want to ask you too. I was thinking, and, and I've talked with them at the hospital, you know, about different things that they could do and, um, to kind of help move things for that area. But what about plastic surgery, elective surgeries? Have you all looked at bringing things like that within that area? Because I know even for Miami-Dade County and for Atlanta, that's being, that's very popular, you know, doing those type of plastic surgeries. So why don't we try to bring more elective surgeries over? Because that brings in money. That brings in, people have to pay cash for that. So, you know, where can we go with that?
It does, and you're a hundred percent right. So I, I still have the pleasure to sit on the Board of Directors for Southern Regional. Matter of fact, they're meeting, as we're meeting tonight. But that is a priority of the hospital. As you know, hospitals do not make their money by people who come in through the ED.
Yes.
So they make their money by people who walk through the front door and want to have those elective surgeries. COVID did us no favors, um, when it came down to the number of people because a lot of elective surgeries were canceled altogether. Um, but once again, when you look at how do you bring in a plastics, a plastics practice, right? So if you're going to do that from a hospital standpoint, ninety percent of the time, they go purchase the practice. Well, A, you gotta have, you gotta have the patient load to support it. Um, you gotta have the infrastructure to support it. You gotta have the office space to support it. So one of the things that we've noticed by going through this process is a lot of the vacant medical office space that's around Southern Regional is outdated. Right? Is that the buildings are obsolete. They won't support the technology of today and the practices of today. So you're really looking at a, how do you go attract a top-notch plastics or oncology, which Southern Regional has purchased a couple? Um, and then they, you know, they wind up losing them, either, you know, a more lucrative hospital system purchased them, which PRIME's no small fish. They're one hospital in Georgia. But, you know, their foundation owns, I think, roughly nearly seventy hospitals across the country. So it, it comes down to building that market. The hospital looks at every possible revenue stream it possibly can. One of the challenges we have to fix though is the influx of uninsured patients that go into that emergency room. Because the supplemental, you know, disproportionate care funding, the DISH funding that comes from the state isn't there. We're not as fortunate as Grady where we get money from Fulton de Cab, City of Atlanta and the state of Georgia. So it's, there's a lot of things working against that medical facility. But PRIME, Charlotte, Ms. Dupree, the chairman knows he has conversations, as all you all do with her. The viability of that hospital is her number one goal and to get more people walking through the front door, as opposed to us toting them in the side door is our number one priority. But as you will see, there is, there is no slowing down in the number of people we're toting in the side door.
And also, let me, uh, let you know this, that I have worked with Mr. Ngikwe. We've been looking at a land use for District Four, which is just east of that corridor we're talking about, to begin to determine what we can do in conjunction with the Southern Regional and the hospital overlay district. So I'd like to definitely pass it on to you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you both again. Please proceed.
Am I clear?
Yep.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you once again. We'll continue our conversation. Looks like I'm gonna, I'm gonna see y'all quite often tonight. So one of the things that, that I'm bringing before you tonight is, um, it is time for us once again to bring forth our next five-year strategic plan. Um, as the board will recall, in twenty seventeen, um, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services applied for, was evaluated for and was awarded international accreditation, um, through the Center for Fire Service Accreditation International. Um, a key component of that, um, accreditation process is the formulation of a five-year strategic plan or three-year strategic plan, whatever the case you want to do. We chose to run it concurrently with our accreditation cycles, so it just falls on when we come up for our next re-accreditation. So our first five-year strategic plan was approved by the board, um, at the end of two thousand and sixteen and went into effect in twenty seventeen when we gained our accreditation in July. And much like the accreditation process as a whole, our, our, our strategic plans are completely community-driven. They have community-driven inputs in it. The SWOT analysis that's done is driven by community input. This board, um, was asked to provide community representatives from each of your districts to, to partake in that. We had, um, other thought partners, Water Authority, hospital, um, business leaders from within the community, um, private business leaders within the community. So we had a really good sampling of people that participated in the formulation of not only our original strategic plan, um, and the one that we are bringing before you tonight. This item will be on next week's agenda for you to formally adopt so we can submit this to the accrediting body as the final, uh, step for our re-accreditation, which will happen in August of next year. Um, and this is kind of one of the things that they require the jurisdiction approve, um, where we're headed and what we're doing. But one of the things I wanted to show you is a part of our ongoing accreditation model. We've, we started evaluating the organization and everything that we do from the ninetieth percentile. So you can make yourself look like a rock star with averages. But when you start looking at what you do ninety percent of the time, it changes the narrative. But that is the model that accreditation uses. It's a self-assessment, continuous improvement model that looks at how you perform your job to your citizens ninety percent of the time. So to help us track that, we went out, um, and we, we purchased the backend data analytics to our records management system. Um, we use Image Trend for everything that we do in the county, our EMS runs, our fire runs, inspections. If, if we perform it, it's tracked in Image Trend. Well, they have a backend data analytics called Continuum. And it just so happens that Continuum was built out to follow the accreditation model. So it looks at our business from the ninetieth percentile, which makes our job a lot easier when we have to start providing data. The other beauty of Continuum is it's live data. So as my crews are in the field running calls, that screen is updating. Um, so as they finish a call and post it to our system, those numbers change. So when I send you data or you call me and you ask for data or we provide you data or insights into something, it's the most current data we have. Um, and that's, you know, by the runs that they've run up to that point. So the heat map that you see on the screen is what call volume in Clayton County looks like. So as you can see, it is not in one area of the county. It's everywhere. Our current call count right now is sitting at roughly forty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. So given where we were this time last year, we're on track to break over fifty thousand calls for service this year. Um, we do that out of, uh, fourteen fire stations. This screen will kind of show you what our monthly call volume year over year has been, and you can see those trends and increases. Twenty twenty, we were at forty-four, eight sixty-six. Uh, twenty twenty-one, as I said, we're tracking at forty-eight, um, one sixty-two. And you can kind of see the percent change year-to-date in each one of those categories. So holistically, we're at a seven point three five percent increase over where we were this time in day last year. So typically, our call volume ticks at three and a half to four percent. This year, we're, we're tracking right at about seven. Um, we also have the availability to dive into some specifics. As we know, pedestrian versus auto, um, has been a big discussion amongst the board. And as we're kind of looking at some of our main thoroughfares, this also plays into a resilience lens. And what you're looking at is our live data, um, as of right now, um, with pedestrian versus autos and where those occur. So the other thing that this software does for us is it heat maps it and geolocates all of our calls. So we can tell you, um, as we bore down into, um, if we just start boring down into a topic, say like where the ten is or go up to, um, eighty-five and Garden Walk, Zach. So eighty-five and Garden Walk is a, is a big spot for us. You can see there's fifteen or eleven incidents showing. And as we continue to bore down, it starts breaking those out as to where they actually occurred. So it's extremely powerful software. Um, we're lucky to have it and it will make our lives, um, in the accreditation world much simpler. But I felt it was important that you understand how we track our data and what is available to you, um, as decision-makers, should you need it. And, and how we kind of, we keep an eye on how we're performing, like I said, not as an average, but what we do ninety percent of the time. So with that, um, Zach, let's go into the, the PowerPoint. Let's go down to the bottom.
Before you get there, real quick, I'll wait.
Commissioner?
Yes. Uh, go back to the other screen. I just have one quick question and just a couple before that one. And, um, because we're talking about pedestrian accidents and incidents, in particular, even on Highway eighty-five. And I'm glad MARTA is here today because I know there was an accident with dealing with the MARTA bus where there was a fatality with a pedestrian. At what point do we look at the lighting in that area? Because you know, that's been one thing I'm pushing. If we're putting a bus stop on the road and we're providing a, a means of transportation. We know a lot of our folks that live in this area, that area in particular, even now nineteen forty-one, are working in a service industry that's twenty-four hours a day. At what point do we look at the lighting there from even the partners with MARTA to make sure that they're responsible to have adequate lighting in that area so that we're looking at the first mile, last mile? We don't have to answer it all today. Maybe we can get with the folks in the back and make that happen. Because I think there's definitely an issue with safety. This is not new to them. I send them emails all the time. We can't put a bus stop, provide, um, bus transportation and the people can't be able to get there.
Yes, ma'am. Well, once again, it's a great point. And once again, I think the kind of the purpose in us showing you the platform and, and what it can do is, is to provide you that data that's going to be asked for to have that very conversation, right? So it's kind of similar to when do you put a traffic light at an intersection? You know, what, what are the statistics around that? Um, same thing goes for, for lighting. Um, I would imagine, street lighting's not my forte, but I can tell you where things are happening, why they're happening and what time of day and night they're happening, um, which, which will give you what you need to kind of have those conversations and, and make those decisions so that they are data-driven.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So as we get into, um, to our strategic plan update, um, for this evening. Fantastic. One of the things I wanted to do was just start with a snapshot and tell you how we round out this twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one strategic plan. Overall, we had a, a planned completion percentage of ninety-five percent. Um, one of the things that is important to note is the last eighteen months of managing our current strategic plan was involved in a pandemic. So we could not get our people together. Um, we could not train in bulk, which is typically how the fire service trains. So when you look at, well, what happened with the other five percent of orange, COVID, um, and, and what it did to our organization and just not being able to finish out a lot of the programming that we had in place. And, um, it's reflected all right here. So this twenty percent that we were unable to complete because of COVID, um, is a big part of that five percent that you see in the overall plan and us not being a hundred percent successful at all the goals and objectives we set forth for ourselves and what the community expectations of this organization was as we went into our first five years. But given the fact that we've been managing a pandemic for eighteen months now, I'm extremely proud that we finished ninety-five percent of what we set out to do for the citizens. So it, it was, it was money well spent. As you look at strategic plan, um, goal summary two, um, this was all centered around workforce planning, which was looking at how we onboard our employees, who we're looking at onboarding. This is where our pathway program was housed. Um, as we start looking at workforce development overall, we had two primary objectives within that category that we completed a hundred percent of. Um, as we look into our physical resources, this gets into fleet, this gets into fire stations, it gets into equipment, both life safety, um, and just the basics of what our people need to do their job. We, we excelled in, in several categories. Um, three A deals with our fleet. Um, and I've sent you all enough emails. We don't need to rehash that. Technology, um, as you see, the, a lot of the technology we've showed you tonight, from our backend records management system to Continuum, to the software that our people use in the field to try and streamline their reporting, um, is all included in here. And we were extremely successful in how we carried out, um, those initiatives. Same thing with communication is involved in our social media platforms, changing a lot of how we interact with the public, different platforms. We've expanded now from, you know, Facebook and some of the other ones to snapping and tweeting and, and doing whatever the young folk do. Um, I have folk younger than me that deal with that. So, um, we've been, you know, very successful in carrying that out. So we show a ninety-eight percent completion status there. And then, of course, our, our major goal for the last five years was to attain accreditation, um, which we were obviously a hundred percent successful in doing as we have been accredited for the last, um, five years. One thing that I would like to highlight and thank my staff and my team is we just finished our final, um, annual report that goes to the board and we had no strategic or technical recommendations, um, for us to work on between now and accreditation. So they're completely happy with where we are and what we're doing. So hopefully, our next re-accreditation, which as I said, will be in August, will be a breeze and we can continue to become accredited. So the twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-six strategic plan is rooted in two documents. Not only does it outline the community's expectations for our organization moving forward, but we have ensured that it is in align and in lockstep with the county's, um, strategic operational plan, which is, um, a requirement. And kind of as we go through, um, the goals and objectives that we're going to focus on for the upcoming five-year plan period, um, we will outline which pillars, um, we have aligned specific goals with, um, so that you can see how we're making sure that we are operating in concert with the wishes and the objectives that the Board of Commissioners has set out. And this is a living document. So as the board establishes and sets its priorities for the next operational period, this document will morph and change as maybe some of those pillars, um, start to change a little bit as well. The second document, um, that you will see noted out through here is the Twenty-First Century White Paper, um, entitled The Twenty-First Century Fire and Emergency Services. This is put out by the body that accredits us. Um, and it was formulated, um, by a group of thirty-five industry professionals from across the country and some that were brought in internationally to look at eight critical function areas that are addressing fire and emergency service agencies, um, moving into and in the latter part of the twenty-first century. And this kind of shows you, critical issue A was a re-identification. Critical issue B is dealing with culture, uh, within the fire service. Critical issue C is dealing with the robust use of data. Critical issue D is health and wellness. E is related to partnerships, um, both internal and external, community-based. Critical issue F, sustainability, um, of not only the local fire and EMS, but the industry as a whole. Critical issue G, technology. And then critical issue H, of course, is inclusiveness, not only within the organization, but within the industry and looking at how the industry markets itself and, and how we go about attracting, um, new and more diverse groups of employees. So looking at what were the top community concerns for this planning period, within the strategic plan document you have, there's, in the back, there's a multiple list of not only, um, community expectations, but what the community sees as strong points and what community sees, um, as the challenges for the organization moving forward. But I did just go in for the top community concerns and pull, um, six of the top ten. Yeah, six of the top ten because I think they play into, um, some of the conversations that we'll be having tonight, which one of the top ones was coordination of resources with other agencies. Bullet point two, ability to maintain adequate staffing, equipment and facilities. Bullet point three, ensuring proper resources and to adequately train the team. Uh, retention, ensuring we're able to keep the highly trained individuals. We currently have EMS staff and the ongoing support of Southern Regional Medical Center. And then, of course, the availability, um, of our EMS units to be able to handle the call volume. So as we looked at the top community concerns for this planning period, we looked at the strengths and weaknesses. We looked at where we've been, where we've come and where we're headed. As an organization, we've looked at our pathway program. We've looked at every- As an organization, we've looked at our pathway program, we've looked at everything that we're doing to, to recruit and retain highly qualified individuals. It was our choice and our thought process that the next five years needs to be focused on our people. We need to focus on the men and women that serve Clayton County and we need to focus on training and building up the next generation of firefighters. One of the biggest things we did is we created an Office of Diversity and Inclusion this year and, and hired on our part-time diversity and inclusion officer who's so focused in life is to get out and talk to our people, understand where they are, what their needs are, what their expectations of this organization is so we can start to frame an operational plan to take care of them. And those conversations are, are starting and have been ongoing with, with the COO and his office for some time. So as we look at how are we going to accomplish that, a very high overview, our strategic plan goal one is obviously to create a more resilient, sustainable, inclusive workforce to increase retention. And you can see that closely aligns with BOC pillar number two. And then, we outline for you what the critical issues are out of the 21st Century White Paper that addresses that topic. Goal number two, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services' ability to maintain an appropriate fleet status to meet the needs of the department and the community. Next week, you will be asked to consider an additional contract that will help us get the plan rolling for that goal and objective, but it closely aligns with BOC pillar. And you can kind of see that the white paper initiatives that, that it also addresses, one of which being sustainability, one of which being partnerships, and then, of course, a re-identification of our organization. Goal three and four. Goal three is create and implement a professional development process promoting advancement, establishing a foundation for individual career paths to produce highly trained employees for a healthy and safe county, closely aligns with BOC pillar five and the critical issues of culture, sustainability, and inclusiveness. Goal four is enhance Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services' service delivery model by implementing the latest cutting-edge technology and equipment resulting in a progressive workforce. You've seen a little bit of that view. We use a lot of that to, for predictive analysis. We can tell you what day of the week and what time of the day is typically busiest and where that happens. For some reason, Tuesday nights are busy in Clayton County. Friday and Saturday actually lag toward the bottom end of where our call volume comes through. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, for some reason, tend to get a little busy. And then, of course, you have your anomalies. But we start looking at times and days to see where we can best position resources to help bring down that 90th percentile response time. And finally, plan goal five and six. Five is to revise the recruitment process to better attract and identify highly motivated and qualified applicants for employment to create a more diverse and inclusive workplace. This is really centered around our pathway program and how we're marketing that. I believe we just hired, I think we've now onboarded 22 out of the public school system with this last group that just graduated. And that program is expanding tomorrow, High School, and Jonesboro High School next year. So we hope to continue to drive those numbers and we will continue to push goal five as we look to continue to bring the best of the best into this organization. And then, finally, goal six is to expand and modify employee health and wellness programs to promote an inclusive culture designed to maintain or improve overall well-being, proper diet and fitness, mental health, and individual healthcare management, which aligns with BOC pillar one, and then, a host of critical issues as outlined in the 21st Century Fire and EMS. And just a quick snapshot into that, many of you, I'm sure, saw the, the email come out from the county where we're now offering free cancer testing to all county employees. That is initiative that, that started with fire and EMS. We started offering cancer testing to all of our firefighters and EMS workers last year. The pandemic kind of put a hold on that, but that was kind of in direct response to the state coming out and mandating that this board provide cancer insurance to all of our firefighters. So we now offer free cancer testing so that we can hopefully catch some of those issues up front. Having Dr. Ready in space allows us to provide a lot more mobile health and wellness options as far as how we manage our workforce. That's how we've been able to successfully manage our public safety force as we've gone through this pandemic to reduce staffing shortages as a result of those illnesses. And this year, we rolled out a new program where we now offer free cardiac CT scans as a partnership with Southern Regional to all of our fire and EMS employees as well. There's a sad but growing trend of our brothers and sisters who are found dead after they go home from work. So, and some of them are perishing in fire stations after calls. So it's, it becomes incumbent upon the leadership of this organization if we're going to develop a strategic plan that's focused on our people. Their health and wellness has to be at the core and the center of that. So that's where we've driven a lot of these initiatives and we'll continue to expand those health and wellness initiatives as we move forward. So with that, I'm done talking now for a little bit. So I will entertain any questions. If none, I'll go sit down.
All right. Before we get any questions, just a statement. I appreciate all the work that you and your staff have put into not only the strategic plan, but the work that you're doing in the county every day. And I really appreciate the fact that you're focusing on the welfare of the, of the employees as well as other employees throughout the county. We all know that in order for us to be able to take care of our citizens, we ourselves in the public safety arena and particularly, need to be, be well and, and taking care of themselves. So thank you, what you do in that space. Are there any questions for the chief?
Sure. First, let me just say thank you, chief, for all you, all you're doing and have done. And just wanted the public to commend you on the graduation of your new firefighters the other day, the look at those young high school students come through and I think they're really going to do you a great justice.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Questions?
Just say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, I want to say thank you, but I want us to also act in a thanks. Because when you talked about, first of all, thanks for the presentation. But with 14 fire stations and all of us having received the email we did in regards to the availability of fire trucks and, and also the ability to transport, it's important that as a board, that we say thanks through our actions. And so I'm looking forward to having a vote brought to the board on December 21st. We need to definitely invest in our personnel, but we also, as a board, need to make sure that you all, your men and women, have all the tools that you need to do your job. That is our job as a Board of Commissioners and I'm looking forward to you all having what you need. It is totally unacceptable whenever we receive an email and we see that there are eight of the fire stations do not have what they need, then we need to go beyond just the verbal thanks. So that's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is, I would like for us to look a little bit further too, to see in your response, how much are we responding to the state roads and the highways versus the residents within the county? Not something we need to do tonight because that's something we can discuss down, look down the road a little bit later. There may be an opportunity for us to be able to bring that before our state and make sure that they're funding us adequately. Because as we know, looking at the numbers and how they've increased, there are more accidents on our roads daily, more than ever before. And so that puts a stress on our men and women and they're having to respond to those highways, 675, 285, 75, when we're still needing to make sure that we service our residents. So that's something we can look at for the future as well. So I thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more. How can we submit to you a, a query on the software for the accidents, pedestrian and auto that we can begin to receive? Is there a way for us to do that?
Yes, sir. Just shoot me a quick email. Let me know what you want to see and how you want to see it. A lot of the data, any of the data that, that we produce out of here.
We can produce it in a playlist that we can send you a link to. It's a live link, so as calls change, the, the data will change, but it just scrolls through the data that you would like to see. We do have dashboards that are broken down by commission district. If you're curious about what's going on specifically within your district, those are already built, built. But Chief Botkin is our resident continuum guru. So if, if you want to see it, we can show it to you.
Great. Thank you.
And there's one other addendum to piggyback. Chief, Chief Roberts has been working diligently as well to make sure that we get that information on pedestrian accidents versus just vehicular. And that's being sent over to us on a quarterly basis. So thank you so very much to both of you all for getting that to us.
Yes, ma'am. And that's a good point that there is, you know, that there are incidents that happen where EMS isn't called, even, and they may be coded as, you know, pedestrian versus auto. So it's, it's good to have an amalgamation of that data so we make sure that we're telling the whole story. But these are, these, the, the calls that I will send you are ones where we dispatched, whether we transported them or not, but they're ones physically where EMS arrived on the scene.
All right. And one final important note, because of you all's efforts, that's why the state has committed to pushing the pedestrian lighting on 1941, absent of a district. So because of your efforts, we're seeing that, that lighting plan be presented before us and I'm looking forward to some changes. So thank you for your efforts.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Acceptance of legal tender. Mr. E. Jiki.
Chairman and Board of Commissioners, good evening. We recently implemented a new technology on a different plat, our old technology on a different platform. There are some efficiencies that this technology provides us to do, to help our customers. In doing so, I took a look at how we have been receiving, how we've been, the public pays for, for our services. On the bottom, you can see cash, check, credit card, and money orders. And we quickly gleaned that we're not doing, we're not taking a whole lot of check, cash anymore. So the info, my update tonight is to request you, or rather, notify you that we going to go to a cashless environment where we are taking only checks, credit cards, and money orders. The reason being that we implemented an automatic check, check system right now. When you come to our facility for checks, we just swipe it in the machine, the money comes out of the account. By not having cash, it creates a sense of safety. We've been lucky so far, we don't have any incidents of anybody acting crazy, but there's for that the ability that, a, a safer environment. It allows the customers to, some efficiencies in that if you use a credit card, you pay What if you use, depending on how much you spend. And some of our building permits are in the hundreds of thousands. So if you use a check, regardless of the amount, you pay a flat fee of $2. So it brings that cost savings to the builders. Business license cap is 15,000, but there are permits that could cost very easily 100 something thousand. So, but it, it also allows us to balance at the end of the, of the day faster because you're not counting cash. You, you are dealing with what the system is telling you really. So, so this evening, and you can see what we, we use the data to back up the request to go to a cashless environment. We've also checked with finance and legal to see if there's anything in the code that prohibits or creates a different path than the one we are going. There is none. So hoping that the Commissioners, after this meeting, we're going to put a 45-day notice to our customers, paste it on our building and put it on our website, that after 45 days, that we'll not be accepting cash for services that we render. That's it. Real fast, real fast. Five minutes.
All right. Any questions for Mr. E. Jiki?
No. How much of this cash is coming from small businesses?
I don't know how much is coming from small businesses, but...
But you can get a breakdown of that, right?
Yeah. You can, the breakdown is that most of them now, because we push them to the web, go pay online, they don't want to come down. The COVID have changed how we do business. Most of our applications come on the web, so they pay online anyway.
Well, and, and I don't need the breakdown, but the reason I ask that is, for instance, this is the month your business licenses are coming for renewal.
Yes.
So we've got a lot of individuals that will come in on that and they will pay cash on that. Now, of course, on your big permits, of course, they're paying either money order or some kind of certified check to come in there. My concern, especially if they're going to use a credit card, they have, they are going to be forced to pay that additional transaction fee, which a lot of them are, they're operating day-to-day, month-to-month. That's something to begin to consider because it's going to hurt them doing their business going downstream.
And Commissioner, that's why the, the check, it's a more, the better way to do it because they have business checks, they have personal checks, that when you write a check, regardless of how much you are writing for, you're only paying $2.
$2.
And that's, that's what a contract is with that, with the company that the county is using.
Yeah, most businesses, almost everything is cashless now.
Yes.
So I mean, that seems to be the way to go.
Yes. Well, they, we still carry cash in some cases, but we're trying to move our customers to deal, to work on the web. We, part of discussion with, what we are doing is learn something from COVID that we want to be mobile in our operation. If something happens, we can operate from anywhere. And part of it is to do certain things as if something has happened, well, something is happening, but as if, if we're not in place. So part of what we are doing is go to the web a lot, push our customers, encourage them to use the web. Our, we, as of last week, linked our map, our zoning map or our map viewer to our system. If you go on the zoning map right now and click on it and scroll all the way down and click, you will see all permits, business license, or code enforcement actions that have ever taken place on that property. So we're building these efficiencies. It allows folks who are doing tire search, it will help us in cutting down, I'm explaining this just to say technologically where we're headed, trying to create those, those efficiencies. It also allows us to answer questions. When someone calls and say what is happening on the site, I can easily log into the system and go to the map and see if any permit or business license was issued. So, yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, Mr. E. Jiki.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is library service presentation, reference to site location and options. Director Lett.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, I want to give you a look into the future so we can look at how we can master some possibilities for the Jonesboro Library. All right. This is going to do right, there we go. First, we want to start with some demographics. In the city of Jonesboro, there are a little over 4,900 people. In the Lake Spivey part of Jonesboro, there are 51,199 people. And in the Flint River area, there are about 39,084. The median income for the city of Jonesboro is $36,740. For Lake Spivey, $53,948. And for Flint River, $52,390. With the number of households, there are a little over 1,100 in Jonesboro, a little over 11,000 in Lake Spivey, and a little over 12,000 in the Flint River area. And the median age is 32 to 33, so about the same in most of the areas. Now, if you look at the age demographics, from zero to age 54 is the bulk of the people who are in the Jonesboro area, but we do have about 18,000 seniors as well. So what is a library? When we ask that question to a lot of people, we get different answers. And it depends on where you are in your life and in your life stages, what the library means to you. To a student, it may mean getting that term paper done on time and turned in, in the middle of the night when they waited to the last minute. For somebody who's doing research, it's the places they can come and find all the information that they need to get the details for that report right. It may mean literacy to the community. It may mean schools connected to us. So it means so many different things to different people. And our Jonesboro Library, being... And our Jonesboro Library, being one of our oldest libraries, means a lot to the community. So let's look at the importance of the public library. What does it do for our community? It builds community. It helps to revitalize our struggling neighborhoods. It helps us with sustainability. A lot of people will not move into a city that does not have a library, so it gives us that livability. We in the library have developed special collections to help our citizens to respond to their needs. We have a thing called Entrepreneur in a Bag, and this is a mobile entrepreneurial office that you can take with you with a printer, a hotspot, a, um, uh, computer, as well as all the things that they need to be able to set up shop to see if that's the right direction for them. We have toolkits, one like a repair kit. So if you need to repair your house, you come check out the toolkit. It has all of the tools that you need for repair and a book to tell you how to use some of these tools. We have preservation of oral histories. We do connect people through our story times and our learning spaces. We have developed communities that have come together. And because they come regularly to learning spaces, a lot of the parents have now become friends with each other and made connections and have playdates and those kind of things. We help with social problems. We are catalysts for the community needs. We bring in speakers who can help with that, but we also help with meal distribution. This summer, we gave out eighty-nine thousand one hundred and ten meals to our Clayton County citizens. We encourage political involvement. We help people register to vote. Then we have programming to tell them the kinds of things that should be important to them as they look to vote. Our library building is a shared community space that really matters to folks. People come and do collaborative things in the library. We serve diverse populations, and we have information resources for all people, no matter whether they have disabilities or not. We have special keyboards for people with disabilities. We have other things to make them feel as welcome as everybody else in the library space. We have places where we bring in artists and authors, so we're a center for art. And we're the great equalizer. In the summer, when we have summer performers, they are open to everybody, free of charge. Doesn't matter where you are in the county or if you don't live in the county. We make sure that all of that is available for our students, for our adults, and for all of our citizens. We have remote access, so if you need something at two o'clock in the morning, our databases are available twenty-four seven. We have digital programming is also available. And we give the students a chance to use our maker space to create things, to use their minds to discover a new world. We have a lot of teen programming. We have child development in our learning spaces. We have free classes, a lot of hands-on technology support, because that's really needed by our seniors. And we're trying to find a way to connect our seniors with our young folks who can actually use the technology and teach them how to use it better. We're a gateway to the community, because we do know we have a diverse community and we want to include all of them in that. We have children's areas, that we have children's programming and all kinds of other things as well. Now, the Jonesboro Library itself is our oldest library in the system. It was built in nineteen sixty-six, and it was six thousand six hundred seventy-nine square feet. It's also the smallest library in our system at this point. So looking at the population that I showed you earlier, we do know that the headquarters library is in Jonesboro, but it is located a ways from all of the neighborhoods in Jonesboro that have the most people at this point. So the older Jonesboro Library has HVAC issues right now. It has roof leaks and has structural issues. And that's why we're looking at replacing it with another Jonesboro Library. So some of the programs that we've had at the library are children's area, which is a small children's area, because the library was small. We have a combined workspace and office for the librarian. We have a reading area. We have the book area where all of the collection is located. And then we have a small computer area and a circulation desk. What we currently don't have really is all the things that you see in our Northwest Library. Things like a maker space, teen space, children's activity space, inside and outside, meeting space. When we have large programs for the Jonesboro Library now, we partner with Rock, and we go in and use their auditorium or use one of their meeting spaces. But it would be really nice to have that space in the library. And for our system overall, we have the Pines Library System, which is how we circulate our books throughout the state of Georgia. And we are the fifth largest system in Georgia. So we are one of the busiest libraries as far as people borrowing our stuff, so we have very valuable things. But the good thing about it is, once we purchase new materials, they cannot borrow our new materials for at least six months. So we get first dibs on what we buy and what we get. And we can also get things from other libraries throughout the system. We have books, ebooks, print, DVDs, audiobooks, playaways. So pretty much any kind of format you needed in, large print, small print, we have it for you. So we try to adapt our stuff for everybody. We have public computers. We have workforce development classes. We have crafts for the kids. And now with COVID, we used to have make and take, where you'd come in and you'd make something and take it with you. Now we have take and make. You take it with you and you watch our digital programming, and then you make it at home. So we have adapted through COVID and have learned a lot of lessons. We also have Galileo, as I mentioned, which has about a hundred and twenty-three databases, so you can find anything that you're looking for at any time of the day or night. So what are we recommending for a new library area and a new space? We would like to have a maker space. We would like to have a children's programming room and a teen room. We would love to have a drive-up book drop and a sorter, because the drive-up book drop makes it convenient for our patrons to bring their materials back. They don't have to get out in the cold. They can just put them in the drop and kind of keep it moving. The sorter helps us to be more efficient in getting things back on the shelf faster, so that they can recirculate. We have conference rooms. We'd like study rooms. We'd like a large meeting space, because that's one of the things that, as I mentioned, Jonesboro did not have. They did not have a place for us to have any kind of large programming. We want a real computer lab, so people can come in and work in that confined space. We, of course, need storage. Let me repeat that. We, of course, need storage. That's one of the things that libraries really need a lot of, because we tend to have a lot of programmatic things that we need to store. Uh, we have collection areas that we would definitely want to have, and also staff areas. We want to have programs like the learning spaces, which is not currently offered at the Jonesboro Library, but we would like to offer that. We're offering it right now at four of our seven libraries, but we would like to expand that. We will continue to do kids literacy programming. We do teen programs, the make and take, the take and make, and we would definitely do STEAM programs. We do a lot of STEAM programs. So that's the science, technology, engineering, arts, aviation, and math. And we do coding and robotics, and we would like to include that as well. For our adults, we want to continue to do financial literacy classes. For the adults and for the entrepreneurs, we do a lot of financial literacy work around with, um, how to buy a house. We do things on how to start a business and how to have all the resources that you need. Health literacy is one of the things that we are really focused on even before COVID. But now with COVID, we really are focusing on health literacy and training our folks on what resources they need to consult as they're looking at improving their own personal health. We continue with our one-on-one technology help, the workforce development programs, and our in-person and digital programming as a hybrid due to COVID. And we will continue the hybrid, because what we found that with the digital programming, a lot of people who could not come into the library to attend our programs are attending the digital programs, so we're getting a wider audience. So what are our recommendations? We recommend that we build new or renovate an existing space. We are recommending twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand square feet with some outside programming areas, room for a book drive-up drop and a book sorter. We would love to have a parking deck, but a parking lot will do fine. Uh, some of the potential locations, the Jonesboro city limits, or the Lake Spivey area, or the Flint River area, or some other unincorporated area in Jonesboro. So I did a little comparison here. We built the Northwest Library. It is twenty-three thousand square feet. And in that area around the library, there are about seventeen thousand to thirty-two thousand people, depending on what areas you count. We have one meeting room there. We have a maker space. We have a learning spaces area. We have three study rooms, and we have two computer labs. In the Jonesboro area, at this point, is somewhere between eighty-nine and ninety-five thousand people. And we have none of those services available, but we would like to have those in the future. So, want to show you some photos. We could use our Northwest Library as a prototype. Not saying that we would have a cookie cutter library, but we can use that as a base, because it has a lot of the elements that we would like to see in a Jonesboro Library. This is one of the newest libraries from the Atlanta Fulton system. This is in Haightville. This is their entryway, and you see that they have the smaller desk space. They have a computer area. They have the RFID system for checking books in and out. This is a children's area in one of the libraries. We want to make sure we have a bright and vibrant place for our kids, so that they can expand their minds and they can really enjoy themselves and learn and really love to come to the library. We have a lot of kids now who come to the library who are crying when they leave, because they don't want to go, because they have so much fun and they're learning things, and they get to meet with other kids and kind of interact. So we want to keep that going. We would like to have a computer lab that's dedicated for that purpose. We want to have a maker space. It really has been good for us to introduce our citizens to 3D printing, to drones, to all of the new technologies, because we want our kids in Clayton County to be leading the way when it comes to technology. We want them to have experience in, put their hands on it, and had a chance to use it, so when they move on to college and other places, they are not strangers to this technology. We want to have an area to display our collections. We definitely want to have a teen area. The teens need their own space. What we have done in the Northwest Library is to create the teen area. Their collection is in that area. They have special seating. They can congregate. They can talk. They can share ideas. And they feel very comfortable and right at home there. They're going to need essential space for studying. We're going to need collaborative space. So many things are happening today with collaborations. That's one of the things you're teaching the kids in school is to collaborate, to learn to be a team player early on. So we want to have that collaborative space for them. We want a value add. The coffee shop, we do have a small coffee shop in the Northwest Library, and we have one in the headquarters library. We definitely will invest in mobile and portable shelving and furnishings, because we know as times change, the library too has to change. So we found at Northwest, we have a lot of mobile furnishings that we can move around and reconfigure the way we need to, which helps us to be able to do a lot of different things and look at it in different ways. We want small collaborative spaces. Thank you. Um, because people are doing individual stuff as well as doing the large collaborative projects. And we want an innovations lab. We want to introduce them to some of the new innovations that are coming out. Things like driving simulators and flight simulators. I know in a lot of the, uh, schools, they do not offer driver's education. So driving simulator to me is really needed, because parents really don't want to have to get out there and teach their kids how to drive. And the driving simulator is definitely a wonderful way to do that. And I personally would love to have a flight simulator, because I want to learn to fly. We want to have collaborative warm spaces, so that people will feel warm and welcome when they're in the library. So what does Jonesboro need? It needs a community-centric hub. It needs aesthetically pleasing space with natural light and color. We need sufficient space and storage for growth. We need technologically advanced innovative areas, collaborative space for hybrid programming, and adaptable, durable, and mobile furnishings. Now, at our last meeting where we talked about Jonesboro, they talked in the new administration building, there would be thirty-one hundred square feet that would be dedicated possibly to the library. With that space, what we could do is set up a twenty-four seven library pickup station. We could have a mobile kiosk that you can check out books from. You can use a computer on it. We would also have computers in that space and also have lockers. So if people have things on hold, they could just come in, punch in their code, pick up their books, or whatever they have on hold, and they're out the door. So with that, we have mastered the possibilities, and I've given you a look into the future. What questions do you have?
Good luck, too. Everything except the funding source. But, uh, thank you for that presentation.
You're very welcome.
I think it was very informative. Are there any questions for Ms. Lett?
All that's needed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up will be mobile vaccination sites. Ms. Stanford.
Yes, chairman and board. This time, Chief is going to wear his EMA hat, not his resiliency hat, as we go through this presentation. As we all know, we've been very instrumental in trying to ensure that this board has been very supportive of community health. Uh, whether we talked about mask opportunities or providing, um, learning opportunities for our community through, um, listening sessions. Um, this board has provided a multitude of resources as it pertains to that. As we get into this next phase, as the pandemic continues to morph into a different space, uh, we want to bring before you, um, a concept to this board to see whether or not you would be amenable to some of these areas that we will outline. So this is the mobile testing and vaccination site. And again, this is kind of addressing community health in a different way. Chief will come forth and kind of provide some of the data as it pertains to, uh, what's happening specifically in our community. And from there, we'll kind of set the stage about areas that we need to contemplate as we talk about potentially having a third-party administrator help us with mobile, um, testing as well as vaccinations throughout the county. So Chief.
Good evening, once again. So kind of what I want to do is just give you kind of a current snapshot of where we sit as a county as it relates to the pandemic and how we, um, we continue to manage that. So as of December thirteenth, so these numbers were as of yesterday. There were fifteen new cases, um, in the county on December thirteenth. And our seven-day rolling average of positivity, um, within the county for new cases was forty point four cases. And the graph kind of shows you, um, holistically where Clayton County stands as far as cases for the last two weeks, our cases per capita or, uh, per one hundred thousand. And then to the right, you can kind of see our flow chart of our peaks and valleys as we've, um, continued to manage this pandemic since March of twenty, um, and around March. I believe it was around March twentieth, when Clayton County received, um, notification of its first COVID positive case. Um, current testing count, um, these numbers are through the Department of Public Health, and I'm distinguishing them from CDC data, because they are slightly different. Um, not, not overly different, but, um, I did want to distinguish the two. So as of December thirteenth, once again, yesterday's data, um, positivity rate, um, last two weeks is five point eight percent, with an overall positivity rate of twelve point four percent over the stretch of the pandemic. And this is based off of, um, PCR testing, um, that has been done and tracked, um, by the Department of Public Health, um, specifically for Clayton County. Now, as we look at the CDC, as I said, the data is slightly different. So you can see that the CDC is reporting, um, a positivity rate over the last seven days of six point two eight percent, um, which was less than one percent change over the previous seven days, um, so going back two weeks. Um, as you look, um, tests performed last seven days was two thousand five hundred and fifty-one. Um, test rate over the last seven days was eight hundred and seventy-one, and that's a change of three point three two percent, um, over the last seven days. So as I noted, um, the s- the slightly higher positivity rate last two weeks is six point two eight versus five point eight, as reported by Department of Public Health. And some of that is just either lapses, um, of when testing result or data is coming in, um, or how that data is tracked. If you have some folk that may have Hampton addresses but live in the Henry side of Hampton, they could be getting clued into some of Clayton's numbers at the CDC, but not at DPH, because they're being filtered out. So there's, depending on the data source you go to, the, the numbers are going to be a little bit different. But, um, I felt it was important that we just point out kind of where we sit versus DPH versus what the CDC, um, is putting out there. So, um, test locations, um, currently that are currently open to the public. Um, there's approximately twenty-eight privately owned testing locations in Clayton County. Um, that's a combination of your viral solutions, your mom-and-pop testing sites that have popped up. It's, um, Walgreens, CVS, Kroger. Um, if they are a registered COVID testing provider with the Georgia Department of Public Health, they're counted in that twenty-eight privately, um, owned testing locations. Um, there is a DPH testing site located at Rock Springs Baptist Church, um, in Morrow, um, that residents can sign up for free COVID testing, um, on DPH's website. That's run by District Three Three, um, which is the Clayton Public Health District. Um, one of the things that's important to note is there's a, a lot of talk around and has been since the pandemic started about does COVID testing cost money? Um, is it free? Kind of what is, how does that function? Um, COVID testing for privately insured, um, patrons is free. So your, your healthcare company has to pay those costs that came out, um, in the CARES Act, when the CARES Act was first released, back when the pandemic first started. So as testing and vaccinations were coming out, um, insurance companies do have to cover the cost of those tests, um, with no copay. However, um, vaccine providers are allowed to charge administrative fees, which are typically not covered, um, by insurance. And then they can bill you if you are uninsured. So private providers can set their own fees for COVID testing. Medicare reimburses providers $36 to $143 per test, depending on the type of test. And many providers bill insurance for the test and then a non-covered $45 service charge for a rapid test. If you go to Peachtree Intermediate Care Site, that's kind of how they're structured. And a lot of your urgent cares that provide these services are structured very similarly. As far as county employees and how we've been managing, can you help me out bud? Thank you. How we've managed in county employees, so COVID testing and employee surveillance conducted in accordance with BOC Policy 902, which you have listed in front of you. I've tabbed out for you, the little blue tab takes you directly to Section 902.10, which is the county's current policy on surveillance and testing of county employees and the workforce. The policy that you have in front of you has become a model for surrounding governments. That policy's been circulated to, I know, those jurisdictions that border us and points far south and north of that as folk looked for how we were managing our workforce. Policy 902 is annexed in the Continuity of Government Operations Plan for Managing an Efficient and Resilient Workforce for the Last 18 Months. Rapid testing, PCR testing and differential testing between SARS-CoV-2 and the associated variants to include influenza, A and B and RSV are just some of the testing that we do for our workforce. All testing is offered free of charge as supplies were provided to the county by the CARES Act and ARPA funds. And then the testing itself is provided by CCFES Mobile Health and Wellness Clinical Staff in coordination with the Human Resources Department or Human Resources, the department head for employee benefit management. So how our system is set up is as we're testing employees, when those test results come in, those go directly to Human Resources. So if that employee is eligible for leave under one of the federal programs that's come out, Ms. Ambles and her staff immediately reaches out to that employee to make sure that they are taken care of and they get the benefits that they are entitled to. So it's a system that we set up beginning probably April, May, as the pandemic was still emerging. And we've refined it as we've gone throughout the many iterations of benefits that have come out for county workforce to A, make sure that they're not abused, but B, make sure that our employees get what they're entitled to. So thank you to Ms. Ambles and her staff for working with us to secure that. There we go. As far as county testing history, CCFES Clinical Staff has administered over 12,834 COVID-19 tests since the start of the pandemic. That's a combination of county employee testing and the Riverdale Town Center Testing Site, which my agency ran for a few months back at the height of the pandemic. So that does include some community-based testing that we did. Testing over the last six months is shown, so as you can see, back in June. This is purely employee data right here. So in June, we tested 35, July 75. You can see in August, we had a massive peak as the next wave of the variant was hitting and it's starting to wane itself back down moving into December and then looking to get into January and the start of the new year. As far as vaccines administered, we've administered 8,438 doses of the vaccine and that is to 4,200 individuals. And once again, that's county employees and several of the big vaccine drives that my agency has worked with and has carried out. So as we look to move forward, some of the known facts. We know that there's a new variant of the virus, the Omicron, little knowledge of the effects and impact other than we know it has an increased ease of transmission. However, the side effects associated with it to date have been mild. Mainly because as it's come out of South Africa and then listening to the physician who discovered it, it's mainly affecting your older teens and your younger adults. Obviously, those are the populations that have the stronger immunity systems. Therefore, the effects of it so far have been relatively mild. We're still early on in it, so we're not really sure where that data is going to trend or how it's going to trend. But that's what we're seeing at least as of right now. Changes in the federal government policy regarding potential mandates for vaccination for federal employees. We all know where that is. Right now, it's on hold with one of three or four different courts, district courts around the country and we'll kind of have to see how that plays out. And then we're still facing a hesitancy of population remains with both vaccination rates at or below 50% in most areas. So we're still fighting some of the same thoughts and processes that we did back in March when this pandemic all started, March of 20, that is. So kind of as we move forward with the policy implications, and do you want to pick up here? You want me to keep going? Okay. So kind of why I gave you the document that I provided you is that is the current board policy of how we're managing our workforce. Now, that document applies to our workforce only. It does not get into how we handle the community. Some of the front part of the document does as it relates to continuity events. And a continuity event is anytime the chairman deems it necessary to shut down county government due to result of whatever the case may be. 90% of the time, it's an infectious disease or some other type of event that is prohibiting the county government from being able to function. As we shut down government early on, that is what a continuity event is. So this document goes into place anytime the county's emergency operations plan is put into effect. So it doesn't necessarily have to be related to a continuity event or a closure of government. Merely the chairman implementing the emergency operations plan, whether under a declaration or not, this policy goes into effect and sets out the guidelines for how the Office of Emergency Management will handle those types of infectious diseases. And we've been operating under this policy since April when we created it and revamped it. We had an infectious disease policy, but it did not anticipate it was geared toward the airport as we are responsible for pandemic responses at Hartsfield-Jackson as well. So it was geared toward the airport. It was geared toward Ebola. So it's been revised and revamped and added to. I think it started with two pages and I think we're up to 15 or so now within the policy and kind of how we've been managing our workforce. And it anticipates variants and it anticipates the next iteration of what we may see. So as far as policy implications, these are just kind of some of the questions that the COO had came up with about how do we want to look at testing, not only from a workforce standpoint, but a community-based model as well. So I will let him run you through kind of those policy questions.
So the rationale for the policy questions have a lot to do with, we're going to make a pivot to go from county administered testing and potentially vaccination and go into the private sector to assist us with that. We need to make sure that our policies are reflective of how we need to make sure that is implemented. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Dr. Bratty. Dr. Bratty with his organization have provided some context to some of the discussion that we've had about how the private sector can help us with mobile testing and how that could potentially help our citizens who are potentially are reluctant to leave their homes and go to fire EMA or go to even a hospital for that matter. So having the mobile units in space would certainly help in administering that type of testing within the community. But the two other very large questions at hand is what is the position of the board regarding mandatory testing for employees? And our rationale for asking that question, if ultimately a third party is going to be responsible for providing that testing for those said individuals, a lot of it is predicated upon the number of individuals that will go through testing daily. The reimbursement is going to help support ultimately that third party being able to provide that service. This board has been very forward-thinking as it pertains to ensuring that we combat community health in a different way. But one of the questions we still are tasked with is how does this board feel about mandatory testing? And how does that have a profound impact on not just our employees, but ultimately, how does it have an impact on benefits as well as our HR department? The last question is what are the services delivery implications with mandatory testing? So Chief Murkison kind of spoke to the fact that if ultimately we go to mandatory testing, how do we ensure that that information, if a said employee has contracted COVID and has a problem and can't come back to work, how do we ensure that information is being delivered to that department head or that supervisor in question to ensure that there's still continuity in operations in that space? It's easily done now because we're doing it all under the guise of government. As Chief Murkison alluded to, when the testing comes in, they provide information to HR and HR in turn provides that information to the respective department. Not to say that that couldn't continue, but we need to ensure that our policies are now reflective of that change. So the future testing model, county partners with the third administrator, third-party administrator to administer tests or vaccinations to target population in strategic locations. That's part of the primary question that we need to ask. And if vendors is used to administer mandatory testing to employees, how is the surveillance data communicated to department heads as I just alluded to? And then lastly, if employees is uninsured, who pays for the cost for the tests? Are some of the other primary questions that we need to make sure that we vet? But we wanted to at least provide the framework to this board about the potential and opportunity for a third-party administrator helping us with said space. And we anticipate bringing something back, if not the next board meeting, the first board meeting in January to make a recommendation to this board to see how you would like to move forward. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
All right, I have a question. If we have 28 testing sites out there off and on, how would this initiative, I know the, you're talking about mobile lab, right? We have one and we have taken it around throughout the community, correct?
Yes.
And was the response, what was the response that y'all received?
So the primary events where we've used our current mobile clinic have been in conjunction with well-advertised and, you know, massive testing type events. What we haven't used our mobile clinic for is just taking it to a parking lot, setting it up and throwing some tents up that says, hey, mobile testing here or COVID-19 testing here. Primarily because it's in service to our employees, you know, seven days a week and that includes weekends. These types of mobile clinics are, think of a Conex shipping container cut in half and turned into a testing lab, right? So they're not a vehicle that gets driven around and parked. It's basically like a little mobile lab box that you could set somewhere. You spec them how you want them depending on the services that you want to provide, not only for COVID testing, but thinking downstream, can that box, that lab be used for other employee health and wellness initiatives? Whether it's flu shots, other things that Human Resources does throughout the year, other things that Fire EMS and EMA assist the board and other agencies with. So from that standpoint, most of the community-based testing we have done have been associated with large-scale, well-publicized events. Not necessarily taking our clinic. We did run some pop-up vaccine sites with Little Giant in which we took our clinic out, set it up, had our vaccine banners floating in the wind, sat out there and they were not very successful. So I think, you know, on average, it was, help me out daily.
We were in double digits, but in the past six months, it's been, it's been hard to break double digits.
So under 10 over a five or six hour time period, you know, just kind of, and we holler at everybody that walks by, you know, come by and see the clinic, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, and that also goes to my concern that we have a high hesitancy rate in Clayton County. So with us knowing that most, a majority of our, a lot of our citizens are hesitant to get tested, definitely hesitant about getting a shot. These mobile labs, would we purchase them? Somebody else purchase them? And what would be the reoccurring use of it? Because I would not want to invest in something that we're not going to use but once, once a pandemic.
So yes or yes? I think that comes back to a will of the board conversation, right? So when we look at what can we use the mobile lab for, obviously, we would want to spec a unit that can accomplish COVID testing, but obviously has wider ranging applications to it. You know, right now, we set up flu shots around the county in certain areas for employees to come in through our health, wellness and benefits. So, you know, having these set up to do vaccines, a lot of your COVID testing type boxes are not equipped to do vaccines. They don't have refrigeration in them. They don't have the right things that you need to maintain vaccinations, whether it's the COVID vaccine or influenza, flu mist, whatever it is that you're going to use. So obviously, we would want to spec a device that we can use repetitively. There's, and of course, that would be through, you know, our normal procurement processes to get the best value. But one thought process is that, you know, the county can purchase the assets and then a third-party vendor, as the COO has talked about, staffs that. So it doesn't pull my staffing away from the other initiatives that we have going on. The other model is that we simply partner with a vendor that comes in and sets up one-stop shop, kind of like a viral solutions or another vendor that just handles it all turnkey. There's a couple of different models. I think it kind of boils down to
The will of the board.
The will of the board and then how would you like to move forward?
The other model as it pertains to a third-party owning the said unit, clearly they're making an investment in that unit. And so you would imagine that making that type of investment, they're looking to ensure they have guaranteed number of testings in space in order to get their reimbursements up. And so I think the other shoe is that if ultimately the third-party is serving as the person that's purchasing said unit, then I think there would, it goes back to that policy implication to the board. Are we in a position to potentially have it where it's mandated that we have testing within our employee ranks to ensure that we have X amount of testings guaranteed for who that third-party may be? How we go about procuring that, clearly, we can go through another process to talk more about that. But that would be ultimately the difference in whether or not we own the unit versus the third-party owning the unit.
Any other questions?
I do. How many did you say we tested? Was it this last week or last month?
Employees, sir?
Just period.
Period. I didn't break them down because we don't, we really have no way of knowing. I can tell you just what data DPH has from the results that have come in, but that doesn't necessarily equate to a number like viral solutions that they only, you know, Walgreens, CVS, your pharmacies, they only report they're positive. So a lot of the numbers that you look at, you know, we can tell you that there's been 12,000 roughly tests we've conducted.
I guess, okay, then just let's stick with employees. How many have we tested in the last period?
Can we go back a slide?
I know you had it up there and I didn't write that down.
All right, so this is testing over the last six months.
Okay.
So you can see going back to June, we tested 35. We had one positive. July was 75. We had a massive spike in August, which correlates with the big peak. September, it came down. October, it came down. November, we stayed roughly the same. December, as of today, when these numbers were input, we're at 79. So.
1,100 tested, 120 positives. And these employees are having to go to a fire station to get tested? And I have to quibble with the chairman a little bit. I don't believe this is about being hesitant of getting tested and maybe sometimes even vaccinated. It's about the access and the availability to get tested. Now, my question would be if these mobile units were at 112 Smith Street, some of our other governmental facilities, how would these numbers have gone up? One. Two, and I know we don't have that information, but how many of these positive cases were fully vaccinated? Which I think tells a larger story to why I see to give access to folk. Personally, and I'll answer your question directly, I'm not for mandating testing of anybody. But I'm all for allowing access to those that want to be tested.
Let me provide one clarifying point, Commissioner, as it pertains to the hesitancy. The hesitancy rate was only looking at vaccinations. It wasn't looking at testing. So there's a cor, we feel like there's a correlation. Individuals that are actually going and getting tested don't necessarily translate into somebody getting vaccinated. And so we're trying to figure out ways to, how do we now get that rate up to get individuals to get vaccinated?
Correct. And my thought is if we have, let's just say we have a testing site over where folks are getting their car tags. Where we know they got to get their tags, they got to get permits, whatever, and they say, you know what, let me get tested. I think this goes a long way. If they're at our governmental facilities, even in the parking lot of fire, different fire stations or police departments, I think folks would see those and be more willing to come and say, hey, I might need to get tested.
Can I say something?
So I think this would be a very valuable tool in helping us to combat these numbers.
You got a response, Mark?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify how we get, so I agree with where you're going, but that's really two different conversations that we're having, right? So we're talking about creating additional access points that may be a little bit more readily visible to the public, right? Because I can understand being hesitant with your driving past a strip center and there's just a tent that says COVID testing, right? As opposed to a more structured, more legitimate-looking testing site. That's one conversation to talk about how do you increase visibility to testing to the public? How we get our employees is they pick up the phone and call their supervisor and say, hey, I'm not feeling well, so I'm not coming to work today. The next phone call they get is from The next phone call they get is from my staff. And we start having a conversation with them, what's going on? Where have you been? What's been going on? We get them over and get them tested, and then we can tell them, hey, look, you have a non-COVID-related, matter of fact, the exact email they get says, employee so-and-so has a non-COVID-related illness, please follow your department's, you know, internal policies for returning to work, and whatever that means. If they're COVID-positive, then obviously, they go into our contact tracing protocol. We still turn them over to their primary care physician, but now we know. Because within that policy, you will see there's also certain decontamination procedures that come into effect if we know a COVID-positive has been in a county facility. So as far as how we get access to our employees, I don't think there's as much hesitancy with our employees because they pretty much know now, when they call in sick with a sniffles or whatever, they're coming to see us. And most of them, before they call in sick, they call us anyway and say, hey, can I just come over and get tested so I know what to do? So, and because we start testing at 7:00 in the morning, they can come to us, get tested, then go to work if they've been cleared. So it's really kind of two conversations about the testing and the numbers that are put up here. What we're trying to do is provide you context to roughly, how much of our workforce are we laying hands on, on a daily basis? And how does that ebb and flow?
Yeah, and the other part of that is, one, are we paying for supplies through ARPA or through any other, so we're paying for those supplies for that?
Through grant fund, they're all grant funded.
So we're paying for those, but that, hopefully, those could have gone somewhere else if we do it. But, and the second part is, what was my second part? Old age. Dealing with, oh, as far as staffing issues go, is this taking away from your staff? Or is it stressing, putting a stress on your staff?
So I have a staff of five that's dedicated to my mobile clinic. This is what they do. So that's, Dr. Reddy floats, so she floats between handling EMS questions that's coming up from my supervision. Chief Botkin, who's my deputy chief medical officer, he oversees my clinical staff. So we have three paramedics, a nurse practitioner, and my paramedic captain, who's my clinic manager. This is what they do. So, between whether it's people coming for vaccine, whether it's COVID testing, whether it's another thing that we have going on with cancer testing, whatever, I have five people that are dedicated to nothing but employee health and wellness, not only within my organization, but county-wide.
Thank you.
And Chief, I thank you all for that, because we've talked about that and the implications and the things that you all do for our staff and our employees. However, I have two concerns. My first concern is this, the mobile units that are set up throughout the county that are kind of like the mom and pop testing areas. I just think, you know, and I know everybody, you know, has a way that they need to make, they're making their money and they're doing certain things. I just feel like we need to, as a board, kind of just step up and put units out that look professional, where people can go and get tested, not just people, just not just our citizens, but our employees and things of that nature. Number two, accessibility. Just like Commissioner Davis said, even though I'm an employee, I may live in Ellenwood, and I may call and go through the protocol, but if I have a station that's set up right there in Ellenwood that I can go to, Chief, and you can say, okay, go get tested right down the street, Dr. Anderson, go get, you know, go over there, we'll put the test results in, we'll work with, we'll work through it and go through there. You all can give me the testing, vaccinations, whatever, at a one-stop shop, and I don't have to drive all the way over to, what is that, Riverdale, to get that, you know, to get that service. So I think, once we make it more accessible for our citizens, and not just our citizens, our employees not having to drive, because if I'm sick, I don't feel like driving across town. I don't feel like going through all of that. I want medical care right then and there. Do you understand what I'm saying, Chief? And so, we need to make it accessible and have different, you know, venues set up, just like Commissioner Davis said, where people can come and they can get the healthcare that they need, or they can get the testing that they need, or the vaccinations they need, at a one-stop shop. So I think this would be good. And I do know with us having a local lab there, they're not charging us for the testing, so it's free, everything is free. And we can just go with it and have several sites set up and make it accessible for the people. They'll come, but we have to make it accessible, and we have to put more places for them to come, where they will be comfortable coming out, getting this testing. We just have to make it possible, make it happen.
Well, if it's the pleasure of this board, Commissioner, we certainly can bring something back for the board to memorialize this mobile testing and vaccination sites at the first board meeting in January. I think the only questions we still have is regarding the policy change as to if we're looking at employees as being part of that, and then we'll leave it to the pleasure of this board as to what decisions you make.
If we were to use a third-party, but we have to put it out for our RP.
Yes.
My last question is, and Dr. Reddy is not here, is she? I just want to get your opinion on how you all feel as a department about doing something like that. Would it eliminate, would it add to what you all can do as far as your services?
I mean, as far as how we're managing the workforce right now, we're fine. You know, we, it got a little exciting, you know, in August when we were hitting, you know, 20, 30 a day. Especially, you know, that morning rush in the morning. But, as you'll see in future conversations, we run 50,000 calls a year, so chaos is what we do. You know, so having, you know, 493 people over a month doesn't scare us. It really comes down to, you know, as we've talked about, is access to testing and where can that be set up? You know, if there's opportunities and options for an employee to go to another testing, I think, you know, so long as we iron out the data collection details, you know, can I find something for them to do with their time? Oh, we got plenty of programs. But, you know, this is really a service that we've provided to our employees, A, to make sure that they're taken care of, but B, to make sure this government can continue to function and run. Because we saw so many of our counterparts that, you know, had major disruptions in service delivery because they didn't offer internal testing, they just sent their employees home for two weeks. So if you called and said, hey, I got COVID, whether you had positive test results or not, because a lot of doctors' offices wouldn't even test you. You got this, this, and this, they send you home for two weeks and say, come back later. So, but once they go through that CARES funding or that ARPA time, it's on them. And a lot of our workforce likes to, you know, burn it when they earn it. So, when they get sent home for two weeks, they're not getting paid.
And it goes back to what you said earlier about when we begin to deliver health-related services, we need to look at our employees and take care of them first. And that's why I think this would be great, you know, if we take those numbers up, as far as testing numbers.
Yeah. Any other questions?
And I just want to say it would be something different because I don't think other counties have sites set up within their counties for people to go get tested. So I'm sure we would be attracting Henry County, some of the surrounding counties, people coming over to citizens who want to get tested and don't have those same opportunities.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome, sir.
Next up, MARTA quarter four jurisdictional briefing, Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Chairman, members of Clayton County Commission, thank you. Got the presentation. I do want to thank my board members, Rita Scott, our board chair, and Roberta Abdul Salam, and Katie Powers, who I know are listening. Going to take you through a brief presentation. I'm sure there'll be some conversation and questions afterwards. So, just a few items on the agenda. First, I do want to, I do want to talk about our challenges with the, with our workforce. We are, and I know members of the commission have been briefed about this, we are moving to a service level where we'll be implementing Saturday service because of employee shortages in the bus operators' ranks. This will be effective on the 18th of December. Our team is working towards posting the routes. That information is all out there so that people are aware. Early morning service on the earliest trips, we will be using our MARTA Connex program and giving our customers up to a $15 discount on a voucher on Uber and Lyft so that they can ride between 4:00 AM and 6:45 AM if one of those buses does not start when the regular weekday service has been implemented. Our busiest bus routes will continue to operate on the regular weekday schedule, and we're working hard. I think we've got about 300 bus operators that we've had a series of hiring events and 300 operators in the pipeline. So we hope to get through this pretty quickly and return our service back to normal relatively quickly. Couple of exciting things that we're doing. One that I want to talk about that has a great impact on an area where I know the commission wants to identify and ability to provide some transit service. We have a partnership with Georgia Tech, and we will be piloting a program where we will have on-demand service. We've identified three locations. So one that I'll talk about here is Fort Gillum here in the county. We have a virtual event where we'll be talking with the folks from the area around Fort Gillum to understand sort of the, how we can design the service. But ultimately, we will be providing on-demand service in this gray-shaded area and being able to connect people to those, the bus routes that are on the east and west side of Fort Gillum and really provide some better service. We've gotten a grant through the National Science Foundation, and we're excited about that. Our capital program, we continue to advance our shelter program. We have about 30 more shelters that will be put in place here during this current fiscal year. Seven under construction, 10 in the permitting process, and about seven under design. So 44 amenities have been installed to date. And by the end of this fiscal year, on June 30th, we will have at least 68 amenities. So we're well underway in meeting our goal of having 500 amenities, or excuse me, 1,000 amenities installed over a five-year period over the entire service area. And this is just an example, I apologize. There we go. This is just an example of one of the shelters that we've recently installed. The Justice Center is moving along. As you know, we opened Phase 1 of it. We're still on track to open the Phase 2, the larger, and this is a rendering of what it will look like, the concept of what it will look like by 2024. Good news that we will be installing a breeze machine. So this will be the first breeze machine that we installed in the county by the end of this year. So we're excited to continue with stakeholder engagement and make sure that we're providing this level of service at the Justice Center where we have an important transfer hub for our bus patrons. The South Lake Riverdale BRT project continues. On track to complete this project in 2026. As I think you know, the MARTA board adopted the locally-preferred alternative that the county commission endorsed. They did that in December. We're entering into the Small Starts Program with the FTA, and we are continuing public engagement to make sure that we're defining the project, and we'll quickly move into the environmental clearance process. Other capital project updates, we do continue to negotiate to acquire the property. I think we are going to go into a, work with Forest Park to take the larger of the two parcels. But we still are on track to deliver this and open this ONM facility in 2026. And we do have some scoping meetings in the first quarter of 2022 around the High Capacity Corridor along the Route 54 highway that we're calling the Clayton State Transit Corridor. And then finally, I just want to give a real brief update on an important project that affects our entire system, Five Points, kind of at the apex of our system. We have a major renovation there. This is a rendering of what we plan to do. We're going to, while we're upgrading all of our stations, this is one station that we're making some significant investments. The City of Atlanta is investing in it with their additional sales tax as well. And I just wanted to brief the board. We have hired a nationally-known firm, Skidmore Owens &amp; Merrill, who's done projects around the country, including things in Denver and Penn Station in New York City. So we're excited to work with a really a first-class architectural firm to really define the place around Five Points as we transform the system. So with that, I'll conclude my brief presentation and turn it back over to the chairman.
All right, let me first say thank you for the presentation. Secondly, I'm excited about the on-demand service that we're talking about doing at Fort Gillum. Appreciate the fact that the mayor, Mayor Butler, and myself spoke to you about that, and y'all jumped on it and made some things happen. So we're excited about that. It's a logistical site, and all the businesses out there said that one thing that they needed was to provide a way for their employees to connect to the bus services outside of Fort Gillum. So this should be a big help to that center as well. Are there any other questions for Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Yeah, what's the ridership for the Fort Gillum?
You know, we don't know what it's going to be yet, and this is why we're calling it a pilot project. Don't get me wrong, we're committed to providing service in the Fort Gillum. We talked about this a lot with the chairman and others. So, one of the reasons we're doing this pilot program is really to understand what the ridership is, what the cost to deliver the service is, and see if this is really the appropriate kind of different mode of transportation that we could provide in an area that's not as dense as other areas of our service area.
And Commissioner, to your question, there is no bus service that actually runs onto the Fort Gillum property.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering, since you have some higher-density areas, why were they not considered?
Well, you know, this is, what we're trying to find is we recognize that we've got bus service, and this doesn't just apply in Clayton County. You know, we've got bus service along major arteries and more dense areas. So we want to look at other ways of providing first-and-last-mile connectivity from less-dense areas, areas where fixed route wouldn't work, whether it's just because of the geography of the streets and other area that we're looking at, and kind of the west side, the southwest side of Atlanta, and Fulton County is really about just we can't get the larger buses in there. So we're just looking at trying to extend our reach and provide a different type of service for, you know, patrons who have a real need. And in this case, it's a growing work, employment area that we want to make sure we're serving.
As a matter of fact, also, there's a company that is looking to build, I believe it's about a million-square footage of warehouse, out that location, and they wanted some kind of mobility transit option for the workforce. And they were kind of insisting on that in order to come to Fort Gillum area. So this helps with that as well. Any other questions? All right, here and none. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Next up, the Public Safety Enhancements. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we're going to have a dialogue about what the plan is to address some of the public safety enhancements. Despite the fact that in the media, there's been a great deal of discussion about what other jurisdictions are doing, this just didn't start in the past few weeks. We've been working on this after contacting, the two chiefs have reached out to us to help them lay out a program that both fits in with the operational budget that we've just now started, and what their plans are to address the operational issues that are caused by the workforce challenges and the pay challenges that they have. So, again, I have both chiefs here to kind of drill down to their specific situation for both operational and what the comparative pay scales are that they're dealing with. And then we're going to look at what our history has been, and then we're going to go forward and kind of give you an overview of where we think we're going to go from here and how we're going to try to quantify and give you some options that fit within our budget. Because while we're also addressing the public safety workforce, we're also going to have to address the entire workforce as well because we all know what's going on with inflation. And it's a huge challenge. And one of the reasons we waited till the budget process is it's very important because we're starting to see some large-scale cost increases that this inflationary market is bringing to the county. And we anticipate seeing some rather large operational cost increases that we will have to kind of deal with as we move forward. So, again, we're going to have a market overview for the... So again, we're going to have a market overview for the police and fire from both Chief Roberts and Chief Murkison. We're going to just briefly go over the employee enhancement history, and then we're going to talk about some of the benefits that I think we wanted some clarity on for the public safety, and then we'll wrap it up with kind of what our game plan is and kind of give you a timeline. So Chief, Chief Roberts, you're up, and we'll go from there.
I was going to say, good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me a brief moment to remark on the status of our agency as it relates to sworn personnel and operations. After I was appointed chief a couple of years ago, we've had conversations in this very room during Board of Commissioner meetings about where our salary and compensation packages fail as it related to our peers. At that time, during those conversations, we were competitive, three years ago. That is no longer the case. I currently have 57 vacant sworn police officer positions. These vacancies inhibit our ability to do proactive police work. It provides a challenge to do road checks, traffic enforcement, gang investigations, narcotics investigations. We're reduced to simply responding to 911 calls. Thus, we don't create the quality of life that I would like to see for a safe Clayton County. Which brings me to our first slide, which relates to our attrition. The first slide shows that we have lost 85 officers thus far this year. I use the words thus far because I'm still retiring officers in the next two to three weeks, so I know I'll see some of you here soon, and that will increase our attrition rate. I'm responsible for a third. What that means is those are individuals that I have separated from the agency for whatever reason through terminations. Compare that to the previous year, as shown on the slide, we lost a total of 57 in 2020. We were successful in 2020 because our background in recruiting unit continued to recruit and onboard new police officers when other agencies were stagnant. And what we saw in 2021 was several of those agencies resumed aggressive recruiting, thus making our applicant pool much smaller and diminished. And when they came back, they came back with competitive salary increases that made it even more difficult for us to complete. Thus, our applicant pool has drastically diminished. You see the 85 officer loss during 2021, which rates 22%. That change has brought us to where we are in this ranking. I don't know if you can see it, but the next-to-last position is Clayton County PD. These listings are agencies that either border our agency or I have lost officers to those respective jurisdictions. The information was gathered by either going to the agency's websites or our background in recruiting investigators contacting their cohorts at those respective agencies. The only one that's on this list lower than Clayton County PD right now is Henry County PD, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe there was a vote in October in Henry County to possibly increase their public safety wages. If that got approved or gets approved, it puts us at the bottom of this chart. And I know that my officers are not bottom of anybody's chart in way of service. They deserve more. And for anybody that doesn't know how hard Clayton County police officers work, I'll put it in context for you. In 2019, and I'm just talking about the uniform division, we had 136 officers assigned to uniform. On average, each of those officers handled 1,591 calls for service that year. In comparison, Cobb County handled 993 calls. Officers in Fayette County handled 1,076. Officers in Henry handled 676. We transitioned to 2020, we had 137 officers assigned to the uniform division that responded to 152, I'm sorry, 1,552 calls for service on average for the year. Only one agency handled more, and that was Gwinnett County. They responded to 1,661 calls, but they did it with 351 officers. Our count was 137. Putting it in context, our officers are working much harder than their peers for less pay. We want to talk about population growth and economic development and quality of life. The census has indicated that the county has grown 14% since 2010 to what we know as approximately 300,000 people. Looking into the future, if we plan to have a quality of life that includes some level of safety, we need to plan to increase our public safety resources in alignment with county growth. If we want to retain good officers and attract the type of applicant that's going to perform at a professional level, at the highest professional level that I expect, that you expect, that the citizens of Clayton County expect, we need to compensate them as much. So it's my recommendation that that compensation discussion include a 23% salary increase supplemented by reduced costs for insurance benefits to those personnel. If you look at that chart and you do the math, those agencies near the top of the end are in that 20 percentile range and made the proper adjustment. I must emphasize, I know that sounds like a lot, but in layman's terms, you get what you pay for.
That's right.
So if we want to make sure we're not hiring officers that are going to violate the law, violate policy, and just be the professional officers that we need to be, need them to be to serve the community, we need to compensate them as much. Am I taking questions now or later?
Let's, let's take it individually. Any, any specific questions for the chief? And I have one, just looking at this chart here, chief. How many other agencies, and I know, I see the way you got it broken down, recruit and then certified officers? Now, that 43, 647, is that indicative of an officer that comes in? Now, 41 is the entry level.
Yes, sir.
Because we have education incentive, educational incentive.
Yes, sir.
So somebody who comes in with a bachelor's degree, they're not at 43, are they?
No, sir, they are compensated at 43 plus the 7s.
Do we know what that is? 43 plus another 7%?
Yes, sir.
Seven and a half percent.
Yes, sir.
Do we know what that number is offhand?
There's some calculators going.
Right around what, 47, 47 or so?
Yeah.
Okay.
46 to 25, sir.
Okay. All right.
So we, that would bump us two slides up?
Yeah, but I don't know if the others have the educational incentives either, but I know we do, and I was just curious as to where that put you on this scale, because everybody you hire is not going to have a college degree.
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions for chief?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrich.
First, I want to say thank you so very much. I'm so glad, after so many years, to hear you speak directly to this. I saw this years ago when I kept asking you, where were we? What we do is we put a bandage on something and we never look at planning for the future. So we are here now regardless. The other thing I want to make sure we say, I say in particular, is that previously, when we were looking at COVID funds and looking at making sure that every law enforcement employee got those funds. The reason I brought that up, because I knew that what we had in place was going to create what we got right now, a mass exodus of people retiring, because it benefits those that are in the white shirt to be able to stack that time. Because as you just stated, chief, your call volume never went down. Your call volume went up. So that meant officers like Officer Laxan, who we just lost, the other officers, all these officers here, they had to constantly stay out there. You even said at the funeral that those were the real officers. You said that everybody else that was in a jacket were executives. So we benefited the executives, so we're going to leave that there. So now I'm going to give you your big kudos. I really appreciate the fact that you not only talked about the salary that needs to be fixed, but the employee benefits. It's not enough that our men and women only get $25,000, $25,000, and $25,000 of life insurance to put their lives on the line, to be able to have to go home every night, leave every morning, knowing that they may not come back to their family. We've got to fix our life insurance. We've got to fix our employee benefits. And the other thing, I'm glad, chief, that y'all brought up about this mobile vaccination thing and about people taking off, because you know what other jurisdictions are doing y'all didn't think about? They're offering short-term disability to all of their employees, and it's starting after three to five days. You know why? Because then they don't have to eat away at their time, because they're putting their lives at risk of having what we're dealing with right now, a pandemic. So they're not being punished for that. So you are exactly right, chief. We are behind the eight ball, but I truly pray that we get above it. The other thing that I make sure that, we need to make sure that we do, these incentives that we look at must be consistent across the board for all law enforcement officers. And that means even yours over there, Warden Nelson, that means the Sheriff Department, that means everybody that serves in a public safety space, there shouldn't be a difference in what they get paid. Because when that call go out and when y'all need a backup call, you know everybody is coming. And you know what I love about this profession that you're in, is the fact that nobody sees jurisdiction? Nobody sees a difference in whether it's Clayton or if it's the city of Marrow. And in fact, when I was in McDonough doing their benefits, and when I was in other places doing their benefits, they called all of you all, brothers and sisters. And we need to begin that same attitude at home when it comes to these benefits. So I'm so glad that we're bringing this here tonight. Hopefully, Dennis, you'll be able to find the money, because we got it. We got $18 million sitting there, we got the money. And we need to take care of our folks. We are working hard. Thank you, chief.
Any other questions?
I have. I'm just going to make a statement. Thank you for all that you do. I know when I was out there running for office, I, I came out to work with you all at the food giveaway. We have, our law enforcement takes the time to come out into the community, feed the community, as well as take on the responsibilities that they have to deal with day-to-day of being shot at, spit on, talked to any kind of way. The things that they have to deal with that no human being in this world should have to deal with and not be compensated for their pay. I just want to say again, it's time for unity in our community. It's time for us to take care of our own. We, you know, and I always say, you know, we don't live in Mayberry. We need to move up to the 21st century. It's time for us to get things together. And just like Commissioner Warner said, we need to make sure that you all have the employee benefits. I just bury, we're burying a plate on of mine. That funeral cost $17,000. If you only have $25,000 to bury someone, that, that's not enough money. And I know that the costs keep, the costs keep going up and up and up. I've made great suggestions for you all. I'm hoping we can get a foundation started. I'm hoping we can use, we use any golf course or whatever that we need to, to get things going. It's time to move forward Clayton County, and it's time to take care of our own, and that's what we need to start doing, and we need to start doing it now. Thank you.
I wait until I'm called on. No, this is my area.
All right, you finish, all right, Commissioner Frank.
Let me say this. This is my area of passion, because I started in Clayton County taking care of our offices and our firefighters 17 years ago, when you didn't have any voluntary benefits. I know the officers by name, the deputies by name, and we still in the same place with them benefits. We don't even have one times the annual salary for their life insurance. That is unacceptable. That has to be changed, and it needs to be at minimum 150 to 100, 100 to 150,000. And, and I heard the question about incentives of education and all of that. That's great, but chief, you already put it, that, put it best. We're not the last in terms of delivering service, whether it comes from our PD, our SOs, or anybody else that's even in a fire uniform that's responding, going in with SWAT. So we don't need to be the last in that pay.
Anybody else? All right, Chief Murkison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I say it quite frequently, I'll echo it again, one of these days, I'm going to grow up and be like Chief Roberts. He's a, he's an inspiration, but.
You want to go bald?
If that's what it takes, man, I'll, I'll do it.
Nothing wrong being bald.
I'll do it. I don't know if I could pull it off. But I do want to start by echoing what Chief Roberts said, and I want to say it just a little bit different way, is we've had these conversations before. This is a cyclic problem that, that we continue to try and address, and previous attempts to stymie the Great Resignation, as it's being called, have failed us. You know, we, we've put employment contracts in place, we've offered other incentives, and now what we see is signing bonuses that just so happen to be the same amount as their employment contract. So other municipalities are buying them out of their employment agreements with this comp, with this county, because we do have the best of the best. And it's not just us that is saying that, it's the Center for Fire Service Accreditation International that accredits the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services. It's the Center for Law Enforcement Accreditation International, which accredits our law enforcement agency. It's KHEP and COAMPS that accredit our EMS organizations and our training programs. So when we, when we look at people and we tell them that Clayton County possesses the best of the best in public safety, it's not us saying it, it's the international community that's saying it. So the question we now have to ask is, what do we tell our employees when they come and sit in our office? And any of you that know me and have heard me speak, you know how passionate I am about my people. They are number one at what we do. I was born and raised on the streets of Clayton County, and I've spent 28 years providing public safety to this community, and I've seen what our people go through on a daily basis. So we're going to give you a snapshot of what they go through on a daily basis. So we went back and looked at our data from 2019 to date, and we've had 168 total resignations walk out the door. I only employ 419 people. So you look, I've lost 40% of my department, 33 of those were paramedics, 10 of those were nurse practitioners. The minimum number of paramedics for my organization is 42, which means I've lost 78% of the paramedics that we employ. The reason I come up with 42 is I run 14 transport units every day. As you will see shortly, that's nowhere near enough to keep up with the call volume. When I run 14 per shift, we run three shifts, that means I got to have a minimum of 42 paramedics to keep my organization functioning. The minute I lose a paramedic, I lose a med unit. The minute I use a med, lose a med unit, the workload on those other men and women just got a little bit stronger. As I've shared information with you, over the last few months, we've hit peaks in our service, where I've had up to seven of my transport units out of service due to fleet maintenance issues. That means I'm half the capacity I should be, which means the workload has now doubled on those men and women that are on the transport units that we have. Paramedic training is 18 months long. So if I'm losing them at a clip of 11 a year, it takes me a year and a half to replenish those. There's no incentive for them to go through 18 months of training. That's on top of the 16 weeks of EMT school, that's on top of the 12 weeks of the Fire Training Academy. So for an employee to come into this organization and go from previous food service worker or whatever they may have been to a paramedic is a little over two years of their life spent in-school training. It's a huge investment for this county, it's a huge investment for our organization only to have them walk out the door after they spent six months on a transport unit here, because when you leave this organization and you go anywhere you want to go, your Grady's, your rural metros, your private EMS world where the rules are a little bit different and they play by a different game, they know what they're getting when you come from a Clayton County med unit, because they know you've been there, you've seen it. There's not a call you have not run, there's not a patient you have not treated, gunshots, stabbings, you name it. They've seen it, they're highly, just, just like Chief Roberts, men and women out there, the level of service they provided is nowhere near indicative of where they fall on a bar chart. They are truly the best of the best. So why are they leaving? So I've been asked this question by a couple of the commissioners. Me and the COO have had this conversation, me and Chief Roberts have had this conversation, and it's this simple, fatigue. Fatigue. So when you look at how 24-48 employees work, an average firefighter EMT that works a 24-48 hour shift will work 8.35 or 8.75 years longer than a 40-hour employee over a 25-year career. Forty-hour employee works 2,080 hours a year. The firefighter EMT works 2,808. So you equate that out over 25 years, which is normal retirement for public safety at 55 years of age. That equals 8.75 years longer. That leads to lack of sleep, leads to increased risk to chronic health issues. Call volume, we run 400% more calls than our neighbor to the Southwest. We run 67% more calls than our neighbor to the Southeast. Why do I, why do I point them out individually? Because they're our biggest two competitors. They're our biggest two competitors for not only our workforce. They're very similarly situated to us in that they run fire-based EMS. And then on top of that, they're also our biggest competitor with Southern Regional. We hemorrhage patients to them like we hemorrhage employees to them. So other things, lack of equipment to handle the current call volume and then of course, pay and benefits. So when you look at the fire service comparison for how do we stack up with those two organizations, you can see that Clayton County is in the blue. Fayette County is in the red and Henry County is in the rear. As Chief Roberts stated, all of these stats and data were either gathered off their website or provided to us by contacts that we have in those organizations. So what I want you to pay close attention to is when you look at the pay for firefighter recruit, which mirrors the entry level for police recruit. You look at firefighter EMT, that mirrors the level for police officer one. And then of course, we have firefighter, paramedic. You see that Clayton County is at the front of the chart, meaning we are the lowest paid. If you go to our paramedic-only positions, you can see where we are. Clayton is in the blue, followed by rural metro, followed by Grady, followed by Henry, and then followed by Metro Atlanta EMS, which is a private EMS company. All of those are private with the exception of Henry and of course, Clayton. But when you get to the call volume, the numbers flip. You look at Fayette County paying a paramedic, firefighter, paramedic, 58,120. They ran 9,225 calls for service last year. Clayton County ran 47,190. So when an employee walks in my office and says, "Chief, I can go make $8,000 more to do 400% less work," what do I tell them? Don't do it? Yeah, I can talk pay. We can talk pension. We can talk benefits. We don't hire 32-year employees anymore. I think Chief Roberts will tell you, if I get five years out of an employee, we've done a good job. They're not wired to look 25 to 30 years in the future. What they want to know is, what are you gonna do for me today? And that's what we're up against. It's, it's, it's a situation, as we said, when you get back to, when you get back to the pure call volume, it's fatigue. When you look at the average med unit, the busiest med unit in Fayette County runs five calls a day. My busiest med unit averages 14. When you look at our transports and you look at how it breaks down over the amount of time they're physically engaged in work, they're working 24-hour shifts. They're on average engaged in work 18 to 19 hours of that 24-hour shift, which means there's very little downtime. There's very little time for them to recoup. They eat in their transport units. They eat in their fire truck units, assuming they ever make it back to a fire station. And then what we ask them to do is not normal. The average person may deal with four or five deaths in their lives. We have crews that deal with four or five deaths a day. They're asked to come off of one and immediately go to the next with no downtime, no time to recoup, regain their thoughts. It's unsustainable. It's not a sustainable model. Then you throw the pandemic in on top of it and it further complicates it. Because as Chief will tell you, our call volume didn't go down because COVID-19 hit. It only added to what we're doing and what we've asked our employees to do. And I'll put them up against anybody out there. They're the best of the best at what they do and the service they provide to this community. But the fact of the matter is, the rest of the state knows that too. And that's where they're going. So I thank you for the opportunity and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the Chief?
Yes, I have a question, Chief. I want to go back to something I asked you earlier. And once again, thank you as well for speaking directly to what you are facing. You and Chief Roberts, as well as again, all of our law enforcement have done a phenomenal job. And you work under some very extenuating circumstances. But when we're looking at these other jurisdictions, in particular, when we're talking about the calls, how many other jurisdictions would you say has as much access to state and federal highways as we do?
Probably very few.
And would you and Chief both say that that part of that is why you are also running those calls? Because I saw that aerial ladder truck, I think I saw it on 75 twice.
Yes, ma'am.
Within one week. That extended one with the red and the blue, putting out a car fire, correct?
Yes, ma'am. 75, 85, 285, 675. We're on them all day, every day.
When that happens, it causes for the police officers and the deputies to be in response to those type of incidents as well, right, Chief?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
How long does it take you all to, when you're responding to something like that?
On average, we're responding to those types of situations about five minutes, but the response is not the issue.
Um, what, my question, I didn't pose it right. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What happens when you get on scene on all those major thoroughfares? They're going to be out there for an extended period of time.
Trying to clean up everything.
Of course, if Chief Murkison's folks are out there providing aid, then we have to do traffic control and all you need is one good rec to take away two officers for an extended period, anywhere from 30, 30 to 45 minutes to much longer. And otherwise, those calls that they would have been handling have to be handled by the units that are available. And then we get into stacking calls, holding calls, and then demanding service to our citizens as we clear that situation up.
Got it. Got it. And so when they, like you mentioned, when they're responding, that's 45 minutes to even longer. And what if you gotta wait to GBI agency to come out or whoever to come out because it's a death on the highway? How long does it take at that time?
Well, actually, we're no longer having to wait on the GBI as we transition to the medical examiner. And that delay is minimal because they're fairly local and coming from our headquarters. But the accident or trauma traumatic incident in and of itself demands a lot of time.
Thank you.
And to add to that, Commissioner Franklin, you bring up a great point about the number of interstates that run through here. Because typically the mechanism of injury we see with interstate accidents, Southern Regional is not a trauma center. So the vast majority of those patients, I'd probably say 90% of them have to go downtown. So we're either going to Grady or we're going to Atlanta Medical. That's an extended turnaround time for our agencies because once we get downtown, wall time, to wait till our patients accepted unless they're critical, get them in, get them transferred, get them turned around. That's on average, an hour and a half to two-hour spend time to get that unit downtown, patient transferred and back into the county. So the more of those that we have to send units either to Grady, to AMC, to Piedmont Fayette, to Piedmont Henry, that's less units availability in the county. It's more downtime for our units and longer time for them to get back into the county. And most of the time, about the time they breach the north part of the county, they're being dispatched on the next run. So they're right back at it again. So the amount of interstate coverage that we have, given the relative size of Clayton County, is tremendous.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I just need a little clarity. I think earlier you mentioned something about serving the airport. Was that you?
Pandemic response, yes, ma'am.
Oh, pandemic, okay.
Emergency management side of the house.
Own fire.
Yeah, like you said, emergency management.
They do.
Okay. Does that take up a lot?
For the, no, ma'am. We, we provide aid to the airport, EMS response and fire response periodically. Mostly EMS to help them cover the terminals. That's kind of a mutual aid situation that we have with the airport. But my earlier conference was, or my comment was directly related to our responsibilities for a pandemic response to the airport.
Right. I, I think about that and our service to the airport and how every year seemed like the General Assembly is taking something away.
Different story.
I have a soapbox for that too, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question.
I do have one question.
Commissioner Dennis?
To me, it's not what you deserve. But my, my question becomes, and it's more to Dennis since he's here. Do we have a figure for EMS, fire and PD at optimal ranges? I know Chiefs, both of you all said you understand. At optimal ranges, what would it cost between, I'll even say give you a range between 16% and the 23% Chief was talking about? Do we have a figure?
You want a figure as we speak right now? It includes all the enterprises, both the sheriff, corrections, police, fire. It's a large number.
And could it have sustained?
And it has to be sustainable.
And could we sustain that without raising our taxes going forward?
I'm going to address that as we talk because there are financial implications to everything we've done in the past and how we're gonna go do it going forward. If you'll let, I'll kind of address that. Because I think that's where we're at. We're at the forefront. Well, I think we're anxious to hear that, but I think Commissioner Anderson has a question.
No, I was going, also, I, I know, we, we talked about financial implications and we also talked about looking at grants, foundations, things of that nature. So we're gonna just have to think outside the box because you all need to be paid. And that's just the bottom line. And so you all need to look at different ways, different things, you know, where, because I mean, as far as finances, I think we'll, we'll, we'll make, we'll be able to take care of that. Just give, give us the ballpoint figure, but you all need to be paid for what you do. And again, I want to commend you all. I want to commend you, Chief, for your presentation today. But it's time to move forward. And I'm gonna keep saying that. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, in some cases, you know, what I'm gonna provide to you here is the history of enhancements for employees and in public safety. So if you look, you know, there were some specialty enhancements done in 17 and 18 that included some of the COLAs. But the key thing here is from 2004, if not prior to that, to 2014, there were no enhancements. So what happened is, we became probably where we're in the middle, upper middle, and our base then dropped. So first of all, the actions in terms of what we've been able to do or chosen to do right here has led us to kind of some of this, this path that we're on. Oops. Boy, I'm just not having a look at this thing. Okay. So, you know, we're, we're looking at the different ways we can enhance the pay. So when you look at the COLA, you know, the cost of living allowance, that's where the scale changes. So you're there when you do an increase, the scale moves up. So let's take a hypothetical situation where you have an employee and you lose that employee. The reentry pay reflects inflation and other costs. Right? So that if the scale continues to move up over the years, the bottom moves up. And so when you recruit somebody to replace somebody, you're closer to the market. However, when you look at a situation where we're dealing with merit and you saw in recent years, we've, we've, we've got to more of a merit oriented, the employee moves within the existing scale. So if you lose a senior employer, that person is making more. But the scale at the bottom to replace that employee hasn't moved in tandem to represent where we are in the marketplace. And then we've also gone to somewhat of abandoned merit where now at the top end, you're limiting the different groups of people in the, in the pay ranges. So now, in some cases, you have a young bottom, but you may start to lose some of your senior people because they're starting to get recruited away. And then you don't have the younger folks to move up to fill some of those positions. And it's, it is not just in the public safety ranks, although that is the most significant because of the significant investment that's made in these employees from training and the skillset that they have to have. The other thing we're looking at is other benefit options. You know, we're looking at what would it take to provide 100% of a single coverage per employee? On an annual basis, that's $2,000 to say, I, you know, as a single employee, we're covering your insurance. And that's an average aggregate between both Kaiser and Anthem. It's about $182 a month. And there's some tax issues because most medical is done pre-tax. You know, so, so that it would probably be a little less. But you're looking at that. That would be something so that each person knew that they had insurance coverage that was provided by the county for the public safety folks. So now we're, I know that you asked for some follow-up on the insurance life benefits. And Ms. Amblis is here just to kind of give you kind of an update as to where that is and what everything looks like.
First of all, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing me to serve, or giving me the opportunity to serve the employees and citizens of Clayton County. I have been an employee of Clayton County for 22 years, but I've only been in the space of HR Director as five. When I first became Director, I knew that we had a lot of work to do. We started setting the course and the direction for which we wanted to go in. I often said in the early days of my tenure as Director that I wished I had a magic wand that I could wave and we could make everything the way that we wanted it to be. I'm proud of the things that we have done in benefits administration thus far. And I heard Commissioner Franklin say that the magic number for her, at least the starting number, would be around 125,000 to 150,000. And I'm proud to stand here and say that that is exactly the target that we have hit. So just to give you a summary of the benefits, the life benefits for our employees, the basic life does start out 25,000. The accidental death and dismemberment is 25,000. The occupational piece is also 25,000. And I'll stop it there because those first three tiers applies to the entire employee population across the board. Then we also have the life, the law enforcement tier of the life insurance benefits. And this is a newer, newer tier that we added. We also, this year, effective 1-1 for the upcoming plan year, we have added another public safety tier with a $50,000 benefit attached. So when you look at all of that, add that up, God forbid that we lose an employee, but that employee family can receive up to 150,000 to 125,000. Another thing that I want to make significant, that I want to say that I think is significant. Initially, for your first four tiers, initially, this was a benefit that was not contributed to by the county. We changed that and the life benefit is now at the 72-28 split in which the county pays 72% and the employee pays the 28%. That averages out to about $3.07 per employee per month. With the public safety piece, it was very important to human resources that we not only focused on fire and police. And within that particular tier, and let me say that tier, we wanted it to be a standalone product. That particular tier is 100% county paid. So that particular tier is costing us about $65,000 annually. But the county does pay for that particular benefit for that tier. But we, in, within that tier, we have corrections. We even have juvenile court because some of the juvenile court officers are going out to people houses, making sure that those individuals comply with the court ordered mandates. So we thought it was important to include them. Also probation services, which is doing similar things, solicitor, the district attorney, police, sheriff and fire. So all of those employees are included in that public safety tier. That will become effective 1-1-22 with the new plan year, which starts January 1st of '22. So I feel that we, we have a lot more work to do. If I had that magic wand, I would wave it. But we have made progress in what we are doing and we're already planning for the 2023 plan year. So if there are, there are any questions or comments, I'll be glad to take them.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Amblis. First, thank you for this information. However, what I'd like to know is, we voted on this, but when did you put in for it to go into effect?
It goes until, you mean the public safety piece?
Yes, the additional piece.
The public safety piece becomes effective 1-1-22 when the new plan year begins.
So that means that anything that has happened this year, those folks, as I stated before, did not have those benefits.
Unfortunate or blessed is hard, Officer Laxa, no, because this doesn't. Unfortunate, blessed is hard, Officer Laxa, no, because this doesn't, and I'm giving you a response, Commissioner, no, because the public, the public safety piece starts one-one of twenty-two.
So, this assumes that the employee elects the coverage, correct?
No, ma'am, absolutely not. That's a good question and that was a piece that's in my notes to mention. This, the public safety piece, they don't even have to enroll in that. They are automatically enrolled due to the nature of their jobs.
Okay.
So, no, ma'am, they don't.
So, then, once again, break down the basic life, who pays for the twenty-five thousand basic life?
As I stated before, the basic life, the AD and D, the occupational, as well as the law enforcement, that is, that is, initially, the county wasn't contributing anything to that benefit, but we changed that, we brought it before the Board and we now includes, we included in that seventy-two, twenty-eight split. So, the employee is paying for those first four tiers there and the premium for that is three dollars and seven cent per month and the county is paying the additional eleven dollars per month for the total premium. But initially, it was not even a part of the county paid benefits, but we did change that and at least put it under that seventy-two, twenty-eight split. Public safety, as I said before, that is a one hundred percent Clayton County paid benefits to which the employee is entitled to. Let me also say something that I think is significant. Under the Affordable Care Act, that particular act mandates that an employer cannot have a waiting period longer than ninety days. For the tiers up there, we have a sixty-day waiting period. For the public safety piece, I've already told the consultants that we don't want any waiting period for that public safety piece.
That's a concern as well. So, you've got a sixty-day waiting period, but they're putting their lives on the line within the sixty days.
Well, that is something that we would be more than happy to take a look at if the Board wants to set a policy to go in that direction.
I think that that's the other issue that I've seen for seventeen years is that that waiting period for our law enforcement is way too long and has not been revisited in probably over twenty-five years. The other thing is, looking at these different policies, the way they're set up, does it not require for a separate claim form for each one of these?
Now, unfortunately, my benefits administration team were not, they're not able to be here today and they are the ones that administer benefits administration for me on a day-to-day basis.
I can make it easy for you. Are these all administered by different companies or is it by the same company?
No, this is by, this is New York Life.
All of them are New York.
All of them are New York Life, yes ma'am.
So, that means there should be one claim.
And Ms. Karen Bohannon, she does an excellent job in moving those claims through the system. No problems have been reported at all.
No, she does, thank you.
Yes, she does. All of my HR team, actually, I think they do a wonderful job with the number of employees that are in HR in relation to the number of employees that we have to service. So, yes, I want to give a shout-out to HR in regards to that. But yes, ma'am, New York.
Like the radio, I'm glad you're giving shout-outs, but today, we want to focus on this and they're doing an awesome job.
Understood.
Okay, I do, so you made me forget one of my, it's a very important question, too. On the pay incentives for the law enforcement, we were talking about that, is it the same currently for everybody?
No, ma'am.
Because we've got several emails going back and forth.
No, ma'am. Actually, and let me say this, I wasn't the HR Director when we put the pay incentives in place, but there is pay incentives for Police and there's also pay incentives for Fire. My understanding of how we currently operate is this probably, and I can't speak for Chief Roberts and Chief Murkison, but they probably have feedback on that, they would have gone to the HR Director or even during the budget process to establish that particular compensation strategy for their particular department. I've been in contact with another one of our captains about a pay incentive for another department and that has been my conversation with this particular person, but no, ma'am, it is not across the Board because there is no pay incentive program for Sheriff Department nor Corrections.
We need to fix that immediately. That puts us in an extremely peculiar situation because they're all law enforcement and they're in the same risk factor. As you know, in the insurance industry, they're all at the same risk. We got to fix that, Dennis.
Yeah, I can shed some light on that as well. It was the early two thousands when the Police Chief and the Fire Chief went to the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners established that as a retention tool because they were losing firefighters and police officers. I don't think as many with the SO, but yes, there needs to be some parity in there.
Yes, sir, agreed.
Any other questions for Ms. Ambles? Okay.
I have a question. Ms. Ambles, can you give us a timeline when we're going to have that, as the Chairman said, that parity for our firefighters, our police officers, and our Corrections Officers? When are we going to look at that and get that in place? I need a timeline.
Yes, ma'am. Can I defer to my COO, Dietrich? Do you have some specific information on that?
Commissioner, the question or what we've been discussing with all public safety, we're getting additional information from the Sheriff's Office right now to talk more about the pay incentives and of course, there's a more robust conversation with the Ward and we anticipate putting that information together in the next two weeks. We're hoping at our, not the Board meeting Tuesday, the following Board meeting, we should have a comprehensive package to provide to this Board as it pertains to the financial implications as well as some additional options.
And I'm just asking for timelines and as we've talked, so I can make sure that everybody is clear on when we're going to get these things done and actually making sure we take the actions to get everything done in a comparable period of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's an easy one. I'm sorry, I'll wait.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
That's easy. We're going to put it on the agenda for the next Board meeting for the parity because honestly, we put ourselves in a very precarious situation regardless of the fact of when it happened, how it happened, it shouldn't have happened and it's our responsibility to fix it. Next Board meeting, go ahead and put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Next Tuesday or the first Board meeting in January?
Oh, next Tuesday, sir.
So, we'll discuss that as we set the agenda on tomorrow. I know it's too late to put it on the minutes, but we override it, we have to take care of, but we need the information that needs to be accurate.
Mr. Chairman, as the previous Chief of Police, I'm so glad to hear you say that.
Any other questions for Ms. Ambles? Do you have anything else, Ms. Cecil?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you all for the, you got something else, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Oh, you weren't finished?
No, I wasn't finished.
I didn't mean to rush you.
Dennis is about his business.
Really, what I wanted to do was give you some specifics because we've been in this process and we're trying to move the budget process along faster because that's going to have an impact about our funding and our ability to handle these situations. So, we're looking to report back to second work session in January to give you some numbers, some specifics about the court. Okay?
So, we're going on record, the Board has directed us to have something at the next Board meeting, so it won't be the second Board meeting, it won't be the work session, so we'll have something at the next Board meeting.
For the parity, we're talking about parity.
He's just talking about the parity for the education.
About the educational, the educational parity, is what I understand.
Yes, it's parity.
In other words, give the same consideration that PD and Fire Department has with the educational system. I know that comes with increase, yes.
Right, so, if we're bringing the parity next week and we're bringing forth a budget implication at the first Board meeting in January, that all will have cost implications.
Right.
Okay, all right.
You know what, just remember, there was this little fifteen-minute timeframe before and after when people report, reporting to work, we have to be careful that we don't fall in that category here. This needs to be done immediately. Got it?
Duly noted.
Just bring forth, and if you have the information and the numbers prior to, make sure we get that information.
Okay. So, to be clear, are you saying we want to have this all wrapped up by the first meeting in January?
When you say all wrapped up, what do you mean all wrapped up?
I mean, ready to go to you for approval.
First of all, we got to approve it. We got to approve the parity issue, okay?
Right, that's fine.
And that's just the incentive itself. The next meeting, we would have to do a line item, we have to find the money in which to pay those entities that have education, those officers who have or can utilize that incentive.
If you feel necessary, if we identify the funding sources and we have an amount, you may just possibly look at authorizing Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget and allow us to do that transfer. We have some options of funding sources we might be able to use related.
Have lapsed money and then we also can look at the, when we do the budget, look at adjusting the budget of each department at that time, but we have some money that we can amend that budget.
Right, because that's going to come out this fiscal year's.
To pay for that.
Exactly.
Because we're only talking about two departments, right?
Right.
Okay, that might, that might make better sense.
Right. So, let me get back to my timeframe because I just about had a heart attack here. So, we're going to report back to you in that second session. This is about the pay increase proposal where we're going to look at several different iterations, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. We're going to look at what those costs would be for all four public safety entities. We already have gathered the start of that data, we have the individuals that are there. We're going to expand it to include several options. We're going to provide, you know, obviously, the impact consideration of the budget. We're going to discuss funding sources because, look, what they're doing has tremendous hidden costs. Where are we spending money? We're spending money in overtime and that's a fifty percent penalty for every hour that is worked above a certain threshold that we end up having to pay. And so, we have to look at those implications about what we're doing here, but if we fill vacancies that are currently vacant, there's a huge benefit to these organizations for that. Timing options, you know, you may not have to bite, you know, how to eat an elephant, one bite at a time. You may say, I need to do something immediately, I may need to do something at the beginning of the new fiscal year, I may do something January first. We want to look at what these would do and how quickly we could do all these, implement these kind of programs. The other items, we're going to research a foundation for public safety based on, we're going to be reaching out to people to see how we can do that within the legal realm of how county government operates to provide that blanket for those individuals who go through a traumatizing situation and death in their family to provide, lend support to those individuals.
I thought we tried the foundation one time before and it has to be a third party.
Correct. We can't, I don't think we can do it unlike some other entities.
The government cannot have nothing to do with it, that's correct.
And can I say something, Chairman? And I understand that I helped to form a foundation for the school system as well and so, like I said, the people would come, we would choose people who had nothing to do with the government or the operations and things of that nature, but we need to do something because we need to bring in some money to cover some of the things that Chief and them need, Chief, both Chiefs need and as well as what we need for the jail. So, I'm tired, y'all, but I'm just saying.
So, then I'll wrap up.
You know, we got to do things, we got to do things different and we just got to, we got to move forward and I'm going to keep saying it, move it forward, do it.
And so, we'll bring that forward to you and let you kind of pick and then we'll have to really take a look at what that cost is. I have a general idea in the back of my mind. I talk to these gentlemen quite frequently, this isn't the first conversation I've had with them about it. When I hear what they go through operationally, it's very difficult and so, we're trying to hopefully can turn our organization around to look at it differently and, but again, we still have an entire part of the county we have to run. There's, we need IT as equally as we need any function in our county and so, we have to really look at the entire thing and that's why we asked Chief Roberts if we could wait a month or so or two to start the process because in conjunction with the budget, we're going to get a much clearer picture as to where we are and what this will mean because it's going to have implications that we have to be able to sustain. You know, we could do one year, but sustaining it for five to ten years is going to be very difficult.
I'll wait.
Go ahead.
And we will. Let me tell you why we will, because of the growth that has come into Clayton County. If we look at everything with a stagnant mindset, whether it comes to our finances or anything else, then we're always going to have what we always had and we're always get what we always get. The other thing is, when we're looking at these other jurisdictions, they have what's called impact fees. I have been researching this, I have the impact fees that we charge, we only charge impact fees for growth through the Water Authority and the Water Authority has been doing that. But I'm just saying for businesses, for homes coming into Clayton County. So, for all these years, this growth, even though we were shut down for a while, as we just saw, we're looking at maps, we're having to reassess the jurisdictions because the growth happened, as you could see, within District, I think it's District One and District Three. You're looking at extensive growth. We got to make sure that we are looking at impact fees to be able to cover some of that growth as well. And again, we're just not thinking outside the box when it comes to all of our finances. I thank you so much for what you've done today because this is the most clarity I have ever received in five years on the finances since I've been on this Board, but we really need to look at those impact fees. Chief, and I think you have a document that may have been presented previously, may need some tweaking, but let's dust it off and get to work.
Other questions? We'll be prepared to speak to.
Yeah, we'll get together tomorrow as well and talk over some of these points to make sure that we, that you are able to put together what you need to put together. All right, thank you all, gentlemen, for your time and your, for all that you do for this county. Thank you so much. All right, we will not be hearing from Nourishing Hands, Inc., that will be delayed or deferred to another meeting. Next up, Small Local Business Enterprise, I believe Ms. Rogers will present. You public safety guys, sure y'all don't want to hang out with us for a little while longer?
They got, they on twenty-four, seventy-eight, ninety-two, let them go home.
Stay with our colleagues.
All right, y'all. We've got three more. Not just two more. I was kidding, this one and one more. All right, Ms. Rogers.
Come on, baby. I wanted to give you all comments of our reports. Oh, Tammy, if you can pass that out to the officer.
Well, good evening, not good night quite yet. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, I am pleased to be here tonight. I know it's been a long time coming for myself as well as some of the Commissioners in regards to the Small Local Business Program. So, tonight, as quickly as possible, I'm going to give you an overview of the program. I want to talk a little bit about the completed projects. I want to talk a little bit about our enhancements and our initiatives. So, you have two documents in front of you. One of the documents is just a program plan, you can read it at your leisure, obviously, and the other one is just a PowerPoint if you want that to follow along with me. So, just to briefly give some history on the program, back in two thousand and twelve, the Board of Commissioners at that time approved and created the Small Local Business Program and I want to kind of just tell you the importance of that program at the time. We had a lot of our SPOLOX projects was just starting specifically from the two thousand and nine SPOLOX, so we're talking about most of our libraries. The Commissioners chose to hold all those projects because they wanted to get through this process of implementing this program to ensure moving forward that we were able to capture small local businesses and goals for those projects. So, that project, the ordinance was created in November twenty-twelve and we had to implement it by March twenty-thirteen. So, that's just to give you a little bit of history. Once again, I'm going to give you a little bit more detail about what that means, meaning SLBE. So, what was the purpose of the program? Part of this came out of disparity study and I won't go in too much detail, but I do have someone from Rodney Strong's company that's going to talk to you a little bit more about the benchmarking. So, part of this was a disparity study where we noticed there was some underutilization of small local businesses as well as minorities and it was determined that there was things the county needed to implement to make sure that we were not practicing discrimination. So, part of it was to promote and encourage full and open competition and this would be an all-government procurement and purchasing. Part of what we do is make sure that we're involving government personnel, that includes department heads as well as other staff members and how we contract out to make sure, of course, we're using the appropriate purchasing procedure, but to make sure we align that with the SLBE program. Another thing that we're, that's important for us is to spur economic development in the public and private sectors of the local economy. So, the question may be, how does that happen with the SLBE firm? Part of what we do, we certify in a specific area and for the vendor to actually take advantage of that, we request sometimes, they will actually. And for the vendor to actually take advantage of that, we request sometimes, they will actually move and locate inside of Clayton County. It may be a satellite location, but once again, it brings actually taxes into the county. So, another one is to create go- growth in the county business community. How are we doing that? How are we achieving that? Part of that is making sure that we have resources available to the business community, that we're facilitating and working with our other government entities to make sure we're pooling all of our assets so we can make sure that any, that any company that's interested in working in the county, they have that information. So, we talked a little bit about SLBE. So, let's talk about quickly, how do you certify? What is SLBE? Where do we certify in? So, SLBE, we look at businesses that are located primarily in Clayton County and the five surrounding counties. That includes Fed, Fulton, DeKalb, Henry, or Spalding County. Some of the things that must occur, that business has to be in business for at least one year, they have to have a business license. They also have to have certain document, documents to qualify. That may include their tax returns, and we also look at their financial sheets, and there's other documents as well. Currently, we have a standard goal for most of our public works projects. So, if you look at any construction project in Clayton County that we've processed through Central Services, 30% of that goal is for them to use certified SLBE subcontractors through our program. If you look at our A and E projects, which is architect and engineering, their request is for 20% as well as for roadway construction and our professional services. We also offer reciprocal certification. In that case, a vendor could be certified, let's say with GDOT, City of Atlanta, DeKalb County, or the Water Authority, they also have a SLBE program. We will do a reciprocal certification. It's an easier process, takes about four to five documents. That certification is good for one year. At that point, they have to then certify through Clayton County. But what it does is it allows us to have the capacity to meet the needs for the prime contractors. So, when there is a project and we're asking for them to use SLBEs, if there's no SLBEs in that service area or in the current, you know, current industry we're in now where everyone is doing construction, then it is a challenge with them to be able to make that commitment go to the county. So, some of the areas of opportunity that we have available, of course, demolition projects, any renovation projects, also A and E projects, design projects, IT services. We can also have someone not so much provide service as provide a product. That's also part of SLBE as well. So, now I kind of want to get to the meat of what we're doing. So, once again, this is the annual report. I am committed to making sure that we bring this report to you at least once a year. The report actually takes a look at completed projects, and specifically for this purpose, we looked at the numbers from 2018 to 2021. These are projects that were completed through Central Services, so that means any procurement that came through our office. The total amount for those procurements was a little over $128 million. Out of that $128 million that we spent on mainly projects that were public service, there are some IT projects in here, but the majority of them are capital improvement. Out of that 128, $61 million was spent with certified firms across all programs. So, I do want to kind of speak a little bit about all programs. So, we have the SLBE program, but we also have a minority women business enterprise program, and we also have a lend, a local vendor program. So, for instance, when we buy vehicles from Alan Vigil, because he is a local vendor and he's a part of the program, he's certified, we count those dollars toward what we spent with those, within those programs. And I'm happy to report that $25 million of that money was spent with SLBEs. So, the remaining, the remaining amount was spent with vendors located in the other programs. But $25 million of that was spent with SLBEs. And currently, for the projects that we have now, we have met at least 98% average on SLBE goals. It's very rare, and I just want to speak to that, that we're, you know, we work very diligently with our vendor community to make sure they understand the importance of the program, to make sure that it's part of what we do as much as certification is compliance. If that vendor tells me that he's going to have X, Y, and Z on that project as a subcontractor, our job is to make sure we're out there on the job site to ensure that that's who's actually out there. We're not running a pass-through program. If you tell me you're going to have John Doe, that's who we expect for you to show on that project. So, the compliance piece is just, is just as important, or if not more important than the certification because certification is just a gateway into the program. But compliance is really what makes it a success. Okay, and next I just want to spend a little time on diversity spending to, for subcontractors. And this is just a chart that you can see as far as how it represents out of the number that we're, we're talking about, that 65 million, how that is, how that number looks as far as that's concerned. So, on your next page, you will see, once again, we're talking about that 61 million that we've spent with vendors in various programs. So, out of that 61 million, you can see that 43% of that, which is equal to $26 million, was spent with either a black or African-American certified firm. The next amount is 53%, which was spent, which was spent with Hispanic-American certified fund. So, that's $32 million for that as well. Also, out of that dollar amount, you have 20% of that, you, of those numbers, were spent with female-owned businesses. So, of course, as you, you all are aware, minority, women, all that kind of runs together, but that's just to give you some, a lens of what we're spending there also. And the next slide is just going to give you additional information on that breakdown for what we were just talking about. So, I just kind of want to, once again, kind of speak about the projects that were currently being monitored. The projects that I presented the numbers to you are completed projects, so think about anything that's already open. You know, we're operating inside of the building, the rec centers and the libraries. Those numbers are captured, if it's within the fiscal year of 2021, those numbers are captured within the report. In regards to current projects, as you can see, just a few of the things that we're monitoring, of course, our Nassau Building. We have a lot of work that we're doing out to the water park that we're excited about. So, we have some things in design, so, and within the design phase, you're talking about 20% commitment goal. Now, obviously, that is the minimum. We encourage them to go past that point, but we certainly are asking for that commitment of that 20%. We have numerous roadway projects that are actually in the process. So, all of those things, there's 20% SLBE goals on those as well. So, once these buildings that are in design move into the construction phase, when we go out for bid for those, we'll request the 30% for the construction on that, those buildings. So, next slide. Okay. There you go. Okay. So, once again, I kind of just want to wrap up my numbers with you. We're talking about a period where we spent $128 million, and once again, this is mainly projects that fall within the capital improvement venue. We spent $67 million with Georgia-based primes. $3 million was spent with Georgia-based SLBEs as primes. I think that number is important because what we do is obviously, we're committed to the subcontracting, but we don't want to hinder a subcontractor from actually doing prime work. So, if he can, you know, have the insurance, have the experience, we certainly encourage that. So, if, you know, it's a smaller number, but we're steadily working toward that where we have SLBE serving as primes. And when they serve as primes, we also require, require them to bring on another SLBE. So, even though you're SLBE, you're the prime contractor, bring another SLBE on with you so that we can make sure that we're passing it along. So, next, enhancements and initiatives. So, these are the things that I will be bringing back to you shortly, probably within the next month or so, asking you to do some revisions with inside of the ordinance. A few things we want to do that we think is going to be really important and allow our program to continue to grow. The first thing is that we want to increase the service area. As I spoke, if you look in that current box, you will see these are the counties that we're serving now, Clayton and our five surrounding counties. But we also like to open this up to more of the metro county. That includes Cherokee, Cobb County, Douglas County, and Gwinnett County as well as Rockdale. I think it's important as we talk about capacity, as we talk about moving forward with SPOSS projects or any type of capital improvement projects, as we talk about, we want to open up the service area. Part of our challenge is making sure that we have enough businesses that are certified with us that can meet the goal. So, we feel like it's important that we open that up. We have looked at our sister agencies, City of Atlanta, Fulton County, DeKalb County, and they also have their program geared toward those vendors, I mean, to those counties as well. Next, on the, the personal net worth. So, just to kind of give you a little background, I know I kind of went over this part pretty quickly, but part of the certification requires that, how do we determine if you're SLBE? We look at the Small Business Administration. We look at their number. We look at what they determine the SBA is. That's what we use. But you also have to provide your personal net worth. So, for your personal net worth, at the time, it was $750,000 when we first created the program. Now, that does not include your primary residency, nor does it include any stock or ownership you have into your company. But that number, as inflation and everything grows, what happens is that sometimes, because the vendor is working, sometimes he may actually graduate out of that program. So, we could be in the middle of his certification where he's working on a project, and he's, he's met the capacity of that. The SBA has also, which is the Small Business Administration, have also increased that amount as well, as well as our sister agencies, Clayton Water Authority, once again, DeKalb, City of Atlanta. And I mention them because they have a program very similar to ours. They have increased that number, so we're at, we're going to be requesting that the personal net worth grow from 750 up to 1.32 million. Next request we will be bringing back to you is to increase the certification period. Currently, the code has it at two years. I don't know if anybody's went through that certification program, or even if you know someone that goes through any, you know, government program. You know, I love government. I'm Clayton County employee, but we understand it is paper-driven, right, as much as we try to automate that process. So, in this case, we want to increase that from two years to three years. What will occur though, we still would do an annual affidavit. That's just an affidavit, a one-page affidavit we send to the vendor to verify all your information is still correct. But it will eliminate all of that paper that goes past. And I also want to report that as of last, as of October, we are now totally automated with our certification process. No more paper for us. So, anybody that wants to certify through SLBE, they certainly can do that. We have an automated system that we use for that as well. So, those are some of the enhancements that I'd like to bring back to you within the next month or so for you to do. Now, the initiatives. What are we doing in Central Services? What are we doing for SLBE? What are we doing for our business community? So, I'm happy and very pleased to announce a few things that we have accomplished. We are also, we are working with the Small Business Administration to actually have a MOU. We'll be bringing that back to you shortly. That MOU will give us direct access to SBA instructors, workshops, different, all kind of different financing options. You know, once again, we can't guarantee anything. It's an opportunity. But if you know, information is power, it's wealth. We will be bringing that back for your review and your approval. That's something that will be exclusively for Clayton County SLBEs. Now, we also want to, you know, make you all aware, we're working with other entities. We had a call today with the, our COOs, you know, with the Task Force for Small Businesses. So, we met with the Chamber today, Economic Development, Clayton State, which has a great business center there. So, we're all collaborating, but I do like the idea that we'll kind of have this one, you know, it's for Clayton County, but obviously, you know, we will make use of it for other entities as well. I am also pleased to announce, we are in the process of doing a mentor protege program. We are actually ready to kick that program off. We've started working on this probably back in March. We have a vendor. We've worked on the plan. I've met with the COO. I've made sure that, we were trying to make sure that we meet the goals of the county, and we are ready to kick that off. I will have the person that will be doing that come to you next month to give you a little bit background about that. But basically, what it is, is that we be, we will be using SLBEs as our proteges because they've went through the vetting process already. And we will be asking our, our pre-qualified contractors and our pre-qualified A and Es to serve as mentors. It's a good faith effort, right? We pre-qualified you. We can't require anything. Exactly. But it is certainly a good faith effort, and so, we'll have our first cohort, which will, we're going to start off small, which will be five. We're going to start off in the service area of construction because we know that we're getting ready to start building again. So, it's important that we have that as well. And then also, we will be doing the Small Business Expo that will be with all our entities within Clayton County. Central Services will facilitate that, and we're looking at, and hosting that sometime probably late fall. And then, of course, we will have our SLBE vendor event that we will do in February. And as always, the chairman that supports us and other Commissioners as well. We'll continue to make it virtual, but we'll have that in February also. So, that is just a brief review of what we do at Central Services, but I will want you to know that we are committed as part of the county, obviously, but also as a citizen to make sure we continue to be proactive in providing the, the community information about how we do business with, with us. Sometimes they think that the procurement process, sometimes it can kind of sit, you know, seems like it sits behind a veil. But as long as you're providing information, you're providing opportunity, that's what we're committed to at Central Services. So, this is including all our vendors, but in particular, our small, local, and minority businesses. And thank you for your time. Any questions?
All right. Yes, there is, you like what you do, obviously, because you're just skidding and grinning and smiling and talking about it.
I love my vendors!
Yes, yes, yes. Are there any questions for Ms. Rogers on this?
I do.
Yes.
I'm looking at some of these numbers, and I know you said that they, the $750,000 threshold on net worth.
Yes.
To get in here. But I know they ask you about your prime residence on a lot of those applications. So, when we say they don't, they don't matter.
Yes.
My thing with all of this is it's great, but we've got to determine, how do we tweak this model? We begin to look at the numbers, roughly about four, less than four and a half percent of our SLBEs are getting prime contracts. And it's evenly, it's even less with the state. What's the average certification process for these SLBEs? What's the time?
Right. Great question. So, the timeframe could be anywhere from 10 to 20, 10 to 20 business days. I will tell you what the issue is. We start the process off, and then we, we, you know, they're missing a document. Send it back, and we will continue the process. That does take a while. So, you know, part of us making sure that we have it electronically helps, but once again, we're at the mercy of that, that company submitting their documentation back to us.
Now, let's, let's say I'm a non-minority. Come in, I've had a business 30 days. Can I bid on a prime contract?
Yes, as long as you meet the qualifications.
But if I'm, but if I'm a minority, I can't bid on a prime contract, being certified until I'm in business for 12 months.
You can still bid on it as a prime. It won't matter about the SLBE. The SLBE is just a program that is not something that will deter you from bidding. It's just another tool, so to speak, in your toolbox.
Yeah, and, and I'm not coming down on you.
Sure.
Don't, please don't take that. It's that a lot of these programs, as we see them, are designed to make minorities jump through small hoops to begin to get a contract. And once I get through those small hoops, you give me a nickel, but you take 95 cents. That's the problem I have with a lot of these, and a lot of these programs going forward. If we don't look at how to begin to tweak these, not only for our local minority owned, but even our local, non-minority owned businesses to keep money in Clayton County, then we're doing a grave disservice here in, in business.
And I certainly agree with you, and I think part of this is, I'm, I'm certainly going to introduce Ms. Jenkins. The minority program is a little different than a small, local business. That one is challenged more. Fulton County does not, I don't, I'm not aware of them having an MWBE program at this time. They're challenged much more because it falls more under federal. So, there's things that you have to do to make sure that you have those type of programs. For one thing, the county needs to have a disparity study. That is a requirement to have any type of minority-driven program that is goal-based. We have not had a disparity report done since 2011, I believe. That will tell you where everybody is at. It will tell you the utilization. It will tell us what businesses are in Clayton County. It will also look at our contracts. It does an overview. We have not had. We have not had that done, it is recommended that you do that every ten years. Now, for the SLBE program, that's not a requirement, as it is for MWBEs. And I certainly understand what you're saying, because part of, um, one of the enhancements, or one of the initiatives I didn't put on here is that I do want us to have another consultant, a consultant come in, look at that SLBE ordinance again, because once again, you know, it was done back in two thousand and twelve, times have changed, to see what recommendations can be made, how we can improve that within the code that we have to operate in, obviously, and within whatever statutes, um, that actually may be overlaid with that. So I'm certainly, um, in agreement with you, Commissioner. It is something we need to look at, we need to look at doing a disparity study, I think that that's important. I've spoken with, um, the procurement officer over at the school board, um, as well as the water authority, and we were looking at doing something regional, um, where we all three entities, we get together and, you know, carry the cost of doing a disparity study, um, but also, you know, pay for your part as it pertains to your contract, so I certainly understand that.
And I know we have spoken about this in, previously.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it is imperative, a lot of these folks can't get their paperwork in, because they're small, local business, doing one job, and now I got to take off, I got to stay up all night to do a piece of paperwork.
Right.
Which the, it's not just a, you know, one page.
No, it's not, that's great.
So we got, we have to take that into consideration.
Mm-hmm.
The other part is, I think it is imperative that we have reciprocity with Clayton County Water and the school board. Once one application is filled out, there should be nothing else that has to take place.
We do have that with the water authority, the school board doesn't currently have a program at this time. So there is a little tweaking that has to be done, because each one of those programs are governed by different codes. So part of that is almost like your driver's license, each state is a little different. Each county has a different code, so you have to make sure that you, your code is exact, you're doing what your code says, as well as with the water authority, some of those things do cross over, but there is some differences in their code of what they require and what the county requires. But I think it's, it's important as we move forward and have someone look at our program, that we look at the, the other entity programs and see, how can we sync that up as much as possible? So that, to your point, we can have that type of agreement, and we won't have to do anything but see your letter, verify a few documents, and life goes on, so I agree.
So, and, and the last point is, as we've spoken about before, and I just spoke to somebody today about doing a, a small business certification.
Yes.
Exercise, hopefully in March, and I'm telling you that because we had spoken about that.
Mm-hmm.
But to me, that's the way we get it, because we're also depending too much on these primes to, out of the goodness of their heart, pull me in as a subprime.
Hmm.
And that shouldn't take place.
Right, and once again, we're going to have, um, our SLBE vendor event, that's going to be in February. That's a network event. Also what we do is we have what we call industry days. So if we know that we're having a particular project that's going to go out, for instance, um, we did this, um, down at, usually, you know, at the rec center. We know we're going to have construction going out for bid, we'll have an industry day. That's the day that we tell the primes, you need to come in here, we bring in the SLBEs. We also work, and I think this is, um, very important, we work with our other sister entities. We have a compliance group that we actually work together. So, um, to your point, yes, it is certainly imperative that the primes understand what we're, our expectation is for them, yes, sir.
Even to begin to look at, and I'm looking at some of the, the male to female numbers, how do we begin to reach out to the women in business, how do we reach out to the women in construction? And all of these different organizations, I just think, we, as a county, have got to get a little bit more aggressive in what kind of funds we're giving away that are coming through our hands.
I agree. And so, um, once again, I'm going.
Let me not say giving away.
No.
That we're allowing them to.
Right, and that we're competitively procuring out, Chairman and Commissioners, yes, sir. Okay, you're welcome.
Well, he should have been here when I came on board.
I remember, yes, Commissioner.
So, I mean, you know, we have come a long way, and I hope we will continue to do better, but.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else?
Not to prolong it, but, um, to your credit, I have attended also all of those, um, many of those workshops before, I guess the Lord decided to tell me to run the mission.
Yes.
I was actually certified myself. It's not that difficult of a process, and it's what you need to do, and I'm glad it's online. And I'm so glad that you work with the water authority so very well. And that's already been in place, and I'm looking forward to the school system as well. So you all are doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just keep growing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner, for making it happen, Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, she was, she was a part of that, yes.
All right, well, let's move on to the last presentation, Minority Women in Business.
Okay, and I'm just going to switch over right quick. I'm going to turn this over, um, as I stated, just to give a few more minutes of background. Um, as I stated, we had a ordinance that was done in two thousand and twelve. So part of that ordinance was working with a consultant at that time. And we were wor, we worked with, um, Rodney Strong's, with Griffin and Strong. They're actually the ones that wrote our ordinance. Um, I'm going to bring up Michelle now, Michelle, um, Jenkins, she's a director, she's going to talk about MWBEs. I think, um, especially, uh, Commissioner Davis, these are some of the numbers that you all are looking for. And just know that the MWBE, we do benchmarking, because there is no program goals. But Ms. Jenkins is going to kind of give you some ideas of what we have accomplished in the last year. The benchmarking is something that we will release to the public. We put it out, um, to the newspaper, allow the public to give feedback. And once I get that feedback, I'll bring it back to you for you all to do the final, um, if you think anything that, you know, you want us to do a little differently. So now I'm going to bring up, uh, Ms. Jenkins, and Michelle is going to give you the final presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioners, I'm very happy to be here. I'm happy to always work with, uh, Carol and her group. Uh, we've been working together, kind of off and on, since two thousand and eleven, uh, when we drafted the current SLB ordinance. So the first thing I want to do is make the differentiation between the SLBE program and what we did in terms of the benchmarking for MWBEs. You have what is called a race and gender neutral program. So there are no goals, there's nothing that's race or gender conscious. But at the same time, that's a tool in your tool belt to help to increase participation of MWBE firms. So what we did was, we went to say, look at, how are you doing in terms of your utilization? And then to set a new benchmark for you moving forward. So, a little bit about our firm, if you're not familiar with us, we are a law and public policy consulting firm based here in Atlanta. We've been in business tw, over, I think it's twenty-seven years now. Um, we have a law division and a consulting division, I had the consulting division. All we do is disparity research, uh, disparity studies, we do supplier diversity, we develop programs, we legislate, we draft legislation, we got involved with helping to run your program while you were hiring staff back in two thousand and twenty-one. We lent one of our staff members to you for a short period of time. We do goal settings, we've done the goal setting several years for Hartsfield-Jackson Airport. Um, we do disparity studies all over the country, I've been with the firm thirteen years. Uh, our CEO Rodney Strong, who some of you may know, was the, uh, former Director of Contract Compliance for the City of Atlanta. The reason we do disparity studies is based on a, a Supreme Court case in nineteen eighty-nine, J. Krosen versus City of Richmond, Virginia. He was part of a group of attorneys who watched that case come up, and everyone thought it was a death knell for race and gender conscious programs. He was part of a group who fashioned what is now a disparity study. And then he was the project manager for the City of Atlanta on the first, uh, major municipal post Krosen disparity study ever done. Um, and he was also the principal architect of Atlanta's EBO program, which is still in place today, which really became the model for the nation. So what we did is we looked at, by category, um, each industry, because when you look at race and gender, you want to look at, uh, is there discrimination in various industries? So one of the industries is construction, so we, we disaggregated the data, looking at prime utilization and how you were spending your dollars with race and gender conscious groups, and then, um, how you were spending your money with subcontractors. So this first, uh, chart is how you spent your money in construction, and this is, uh, looked at FY seventeen through nineteen as compared to this last year. So we broke it down by each ethnicity group. So if you look at the total, uh, utilization of all MWBEs and DBEs uh, between seventeen and nineteen and twenty, you went from twelve point oh four percent to thirty-six point oh three percent, which is a huge jump. Um, and I really do credit that with the fact that although you have a race and gender neutral program, a lot of your small businesses and local businesses are minority and women-owned. So having a race and gender neutral program has really helped to increase that participation. Um, however, if you look at African-Americans as primes, and remember what you're measuring when you look at primes and subs. Prime is how the county behaves in its procurement process. Uh, subcontracting data is really how the primes are reporting and how the primes are behaving. And so what you have is you have more of a control over telling the primes what to do, but also there are things that you may want to enhance your procurement behaviors on in order to increase some of the other areas. So if you look at this, you see that the majority of that growth, that went from twelve point oh four percent to thirty-six point oh three percent, was with non-minority women. And I will tell you why that happens sometimes. When you have a race and gender neutral program, and a lot of times when you combine non-minority, small businesses, and particularly women-owned businesses, or MWBEs, and you put women in with minorities, a lot of times what happens is the, the, the non-minority women are enhanced. Um, so that also may indicate a need for maybe having some race and gender conscious programs. When we look at, um, um, hold on, went past a couple of slides. If we look at A and E, which is construction-related professional services, uh, you'll see that you went, you had very small, um, M, MBE participation as primes. Again, uh, you had, you had a large participation of non-minority women, but that kind of flatlined going into two thousand and twenty as primes. In professional services, uh, you had, you kind of stayed the same with non-minority women and went down in your MWBE uses of, in, in total. Uh, and a lot of that is a decrease in MBEs, in professional services. Again, your African-American participation went down. In, um, other services, uh, kind of, you know, went up a little bit uh, with non-minority women, went down again with total MBEs. And again, this is direct contracting by the county. And then in goods, um, again, not a huge participation in goods, that's kind of not unusual, although these are fairly small numbers to have, uh, MWBE slash DBE participation. You kind of stayed the same overall. Again, uh, the non-minority women went down a little bit, MBs went up a little bit, but none of those numbers are, are big numbers. So that's kind of the summary of your direct contracting. Um, but then when we look at, uh, subcontracting utilization, which is again, putting those SLBE goals on contracts to primes. Now you've got, um, in the total MWBEs in construction went from seventy to sixty-seven, so roughly somewhere around the same. Your non-minority women went up, your total MBs went down from fifty-nine point six-two down to seventeen point eight-eight percent. Uh, subcontractor utilization, MBs, again, there's kind of this flatlining in, I meant, did I, did I skip A and E? Uh, in A and E, you went from, uh, total MBE of seventy-one point eight-three percent to fifteen point two-eight percent. Um, non-minority women also dropped over that period. In other services, uh, you've got total MBE went up substantially from, uh, FY seventeen through FY nineteen, uh, to FY twenty. Uh, your total MWB numbers also went substantially up in other services. Other services tend to be, um, IT goes in that area, um, lawn service, janitorial, anything that doesn't qualify as a construction-related professional service or professional services, which is usually licensed areas, or very specialized kinds of services. So these are kind of the unspecialized services, kind of a catch-all for all the other services where you've actually increased. In goods, again, we've got, there's very little contracting, so I showed this, but there's very, if no contracting in goods, and usually with MWB programs, there usually aren't goals on goods, because there's little or no subcontracting in that area. So then we did something called, um, total utilization, so taking the two of those. And sometimes it's really hard when we separate out prime contracting from subcontracting. Looking at those numbers, it's sometimes hard to say, well, who, how much did people ultimately get? How much did these MWBS ultimately get in their pocket? Because it really depends on how much of your contracting is in fact subcontracted. So I could show you these great numbers for subcontracting, but if only ten percent of all your contracts are being subcontracted, that's not a lot of money going into pockets. So what we did, we, we took at, looked at total utilization, and literally what we did, went was contract by contract. If a non-minority firm got a million-dollar contract, and two hundred thousand of that went to an African-American subcontractor, we separated those out. Put the eight hundred thousand in the non-minority category, and then put the two hundred thousand in the, um, minority category, in the African-American category. And so we really did that contract by contract. And so in construction, uh, you had a total utilization, and we also compared that to availability, um, which was done back in your original disparity study. Um, so you have, um, in construction, your total MWBE utilization across the board was thirteen point oh seven percent. Non-minority women was almost forty percent. And so your total MWBE utilization in construction was actually fifty-three point oh six percent. Um, and that's compared to, to availability. So you're actually performing over availability in construction if you combine your prime dollars with your, uh, subcontracting dollars. And so your benchmark would always stay, your new benchmark for this coming year would always no lo, not be any higher than availability. So you actually exceeded the utilize, the availability number with your utilization between the two. In A and E, um, you've got a total MWBE utilization of one point eight seven, I mean, I'm sorry, one point eight two percent. Your availability is forty-nine percent. So that's a really huge jump. So what we did is, we don't want to do benchmarks that you cannot achieve, so going from one percent to forty-nine percent in a year, when you come back to do your new benchmark. So in essence, what we do is we kind of average the two. So halfway, get to a halfway point before you try and get all the way. So you want to set kind of benchmarks that are achievable. So we set the benchmark for the coming year at twenty-five point seven eight percent. Um, and again, these are benchmarks. You don't have a race and gender conscious program, so it's using all your race and gender neutral tools, because you can't, at this point, use any race and gender conscious tools, because you don't have a factual predicate for that. In professional services, you've got, um, six point five-two percent utilization of MWBE firms, but your availability is twenty percent. So again, there's a big difference between, um, the utilization and the availability. Um, and if you look at the MBE number, it's one point eight, one point eight-five percent utilization with an availability of sixteen point eight-three percent. So we set the benchmark at thirteen point four nine percent. Um, other services, you've got a total utilization of twenty-seven point three-two percent. Your availability is fourteen, so you've actually exceeded your, um, availability. Um, however, again, if you look at MBs, your MBE availability is short. And what you've done is, is you've actually done a little. And what you've done is, is you've actually done a little better on, um, on your non-minority women. Cause your availability of non-minority women was two-point-six-two percent, but your utilization of them was twenty-one-point-eight-zero. Again, when you combine women and minorities together, the women usually are going to get the contracts. So when you do do, you know, when you come around, this is a really good argument fought, for when you do come around to doing a race and gender conscious program, you, this will show you why you always wanna separate out your goals. You never wanna have MBE and WBE goals combined. So finally, in, uh, goods and supplies, the total amount of utilization is eleven-point-one-five percent. Your availability is thirteen-point, um, four-two percent. We set your benchmark at twelve-point-two-nine percent. So in essence, what we're doing is we're setting your benchmark halfway between your utilization and your availability. Then when you meet that benchmark, we'll do it again and get closer and closer, so that ultimately, you'll be at availability. And then you'd never wanna set a benchmark over availability. So I'm open for questions.
All right, that's a lot of information.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I'm really glad that, uh, you all have separated the non-minority women. Because years ago, it used to be minorities and then it was, the, the business always went to the Caucasian women. So I, I'm really glad to see that, so, uh, is that done throughout or that's just something you did for Clayton County?
No, we al- well, um, our, our contract with Clayton County is just do the benchmarking, but if you do a disparity study, you actually split it out like we did, by ethnicity, and then when you set a goal, you would always set a goal of MBs and, and WBEs because race discriminate, race and, and ethnicity discrimination is very different than gender discrimination.
Okay, and, and I just wanna say this on one of your slides, when you were talking about, uh, something that happened years ago in Atlanta, and I just always think about Maynard Jackson.
Uh-huh.
You know, how he was able to get things done like that and I don't know what, what that, I mean, anyway, I'm just so glad that he was like the beginning force, I think, throughout the country.
Well, actually, what really happened was the City of Atlanta had a program pre-Crowson, because what happened is when the federal government put in place its DBE program, that ten percent on federal contracts, local and state governments followed suit and started to create programs as well. That's when this challenge came up under Crowson against the City of Richmond and the Supreme Court basically said, there's strict scrutiny, you gotta, they start, it's for the first time, the court said that, that benevolent remedial uh, race and gender conscious programs were treated under the Constitution in the same way that malevolent discriminatory practices were. Says you're treat- in both cases, you're treating people differently based on race and gender and that runs afoul of the Fourteenth Amendment. So what they said is, we're gonna look at this with a real side-eye, or what the law calls strict scrutiny. And so, it, when you use strict scrutiny for any attorneys, that always meant strict in theory, fatal in fact. But these, you know, there are some smart people out there who came up with an idea to say, well, we're gonna overcome that strict scrutiny through something like a disparity study.
And that was dealing with the set-asides?
Say that again?
Was that dealing with the set-aside programs?
Yeah, well, set-asides now are still a bad word, you still don't do set-asides as primes. But what we do do is we do set-asides for small businesses. Particularly when you've, cause they, you don't have the same problems with that. But, you know, so they don't allow set-asides even for subs, but what they do do is you have to demonstrate good faith efforts. So it's not a mandate, if you set a goal on a project, twenty percent goal, you either have to meet the goal or you have to demonstrate good faith efforts, or else your bid is thrown out.
So who's heading up the Small Business Administration now?
Hmm, I don't know.
I know, I know.
Answer that question. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your presentation and we stand adjourned.